Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now in session for this regular meeting Tuesday May sixteenth. It's good to see you all here this morning. Commissioners, we have a lot ahead of us today, including some public hearings, and after lunch, we have a workshop. So there's a lot to do today, so we'll get to it. Commissioner Ward, could you leave us some prayer and pledge, please?
Yes. When we come to you today, as we conduct our county business, we pray that you will guide our thoughts, our minds, our hearts, to make the right, best decisions that we can make for our citizens that we serve. We pray for our people in the community, people in the room. We thank you for letting us have our Commissioner Lockley back, glad he's feeling better, and everyone else in the community that needs prayers. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
To the flag of the United States of America, in due repub, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice around.
Okay, Mr. Roan, do we have anything that needs to be added to today's agenda?
Good morning. No, Mr. Chairman, one thing I will say, just to note, I got to put them in the back. So Erin had a report that was done, modified, amended. Basically, she added some information to it. That was handed out late yesterday evening. You guys got it. It was uploaded to the website for the public, and again, you guys got it. And I'm going to make, I have copies making right now to put in the back for the public. Okay? But that was basically the only thing you could indicate as a change.
Okay. So do we have an approval of the agenda?
So moved to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Up next, we have approval of minutes and payment of county bills.
Is that me?
A motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Also a five oh vote. All right. So up next will be public comments. Now, Mr. Roan, some of these I received look like they're for specific items on the agenda. You know what I mean?
Yes, sir. You actually, and I have one more to print for you. That's also for the public hearing. And you may remind the public, there's nothing wrong with it, but they do not have to fill out a speaker card to speak during a public hearing.
That's correct.
Because we have two of today.
Yes.
Just under public comments or anywhere else where we're taking action.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So I think you're going to end up with three, and I think each one applies to the public hearings that we have today.
Right. So none of them are just general, is what I'm reading?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, did we approve the minutes?
We did them both together.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes, ma'am. Is that correct? Okay. Making sure I'm right. I spoke and then I said, oh, I might be wrong about that. Okay, so next is Mr. Ben Chandler from the ARPC, here to talk about Regional Rural Transportation Plan.
Good morning, Commissioners. Really appreciate you allowing me to be here this morning. I am Ben Chandler with the Appalachian Regional Planning Council. I believe the last time I was, since the last I was here, Commissioner Jones, you're now the chairman of our planning council. We certainly appreciate your leadership and support of the work we do there. Today, I'm here to introduce to you the Regional Rural Transportation Plan that we kicked this off in the last couple of months here. This is to establish a long-range transportation plan, twenty-year horizon, for the five counties in our region that are not a part of the Capital Region Transportation Planning Organization. So that includes Franklin, Gulf, Liberty, Calhoun, and Jackson. And these will be for both long-term, short-term projects. And this is a, this is an FDOT initiative in partnership with Appalachian Regional Planning Council. And today, I want to introduce to you Tanya Branton. She is Planning Specialist and Project Manager, Rural Liaison for DOT District Three, and she is managing the project from DOT's end. And so we'll be working closely together through this whole entire process. This is a continuation of a project that already started in the Emerald Coast region to the west of us. They did a pilot project to incorporate all of their rural areas that aren't under their transportation planning organizations as well. So once this project is done, this will be a two-year, two-year project. There will be full coverage in District Three for long-term transportation planning. Right now, counties and municipalities in the non-TPO areas petition, as you know, petition DOT for projects separately. This will help consolidate that process so that you're not going it alone. And this puts these projects on the radar screen, keeps them there, moving them along in priority order. As you may recall, it's been a little over a year ago, I think, February of 2022, all five of its counties, including Franklin County, had entered into an interlocal agreement for the creation of a rural transportation plan. And that is intended to have this regional perspective that we're talking about. So that's going to lay the foundation of a technical advisory committee that we'll be putting together. They'll have representatives from each county, or looking to have two or three representatives from each county. We're working out the public involvement plan right now. And that committee will rank the products that get identified through a series of public workshops. There will be several guiding principles of, and planning emphasis areas for this plan, focusing in on safety, system connectivity, reaching underserved communities, resiliency, and then accounting for emerging mobility, emerging technologies. I did mention that there will be extensive public involvement. We'll be coming back to you, to the, in workshop format, to work with the, identifying the products that you want to have on the list. And we want to make sure that we're targeting the highest priority projects to start with. And then we'll, that way we can track them throughout this process. As we establish this technical advisory committee, we'll be looking at, once those projects start to get identified, we'll have specific ranking criteria that that committee will follow, so that we'll be able to evaluate each project as to what potential funding sources it might be eligible for. And as I mentioned, this is a two-year process. We just kicked it off. And so the intent is, once it's completed, it'll be followed up by annual updates to that plan. So this is an ongoing process to make sure that there is consistent, long-term transportation planning coverage for the rural areas. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Commissioners, today for Mr. Chandler? Mr. Chandler, I do want to clarify something I've said to the board before, and I think I was wrong about it when I was talking to you this week, getting prepared for this meeting. So, and I have said that it was my understanding that this would be providing those counties with like a detailed analysis of all their roads. That's not actually in this plan. This is more regional approach.
That's correct.
So if that's something this board wants to do, we're probably going to have to, you know, do a separate plan for that, because we do have an issue with a lot of our roads. And I think if we had somebody help us prioritize them from worst to first, it might be better. And some of those might wind up being in this regional plan, but not necessarily. And I just want to clarify, because I didn't say that, I didn't clarify that this morning.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Chandler? Keep us updated, sir. Thank you.
Will do, sir. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Mike Kozar, Alliance CEO.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you again for allowing me to be here this morning. And a little time ago, you requested us to come back and make a presentation on the operations of the hospital. And so I wanted to just take a little bit of time this morning to explain, you know, where we are and where we're going, and the financials of the organization. Just a brief agenda. The current state of healthcare in Florida, significant accomplishments of the hospital, operational, financial results, and where are we heading? Current state of healthcare in Florida, Florida hospital utilization of contracted staff soared in recent years by three hundred and twenty-eight percent. The total dollars spent on contract labor was, went up four hundred and eighty-nine percent. And salary margins, sal, excuse me, salary, the salary market adjustments also increased tremendously. And that really is what we've been seeing here, coming out of the pandemic. We've seen our salary costs escalate tremendously in the industry. As far as the current state of healthcare in Florida, as you can see on the left-hand side, you can look at how labor, I mean, how hospital finances and costs were in 2019, pre-pandemic. And you can look at 2022, you can see that the labor costs for the industry in Florida increased over forty-five percent. Hospitals' operating margins continued to decline. Hospitals currently have about twenty-eight percent less cash on hand. And you can see the drug cost has increased, you know, about seventeen percent. Medical supply is about nineteen percent. So you can see where the cost of operating healthcare facilities in the state of Florida has really increased in that period of time. Some significant accomplishments for our hospital, you know, alliance purchasing. We implemented that purchasing program to drive down costs for supplies, equipment that the hospital needs. Working with a national purchasing group allows us to get the best pricing as far as those supplies and equipment for the organization. We looked at the emergency department coding. We review, when a patient comes to the emergency room, are we coding for the, for the current condition that the patient we're treating for? Why that is important is because that determines what reimbursement the insurance companies pay the hospital based upon the coding of the, of that patient and the care that they're getting, and making sure that is accurate to ensure that. Charge master review. We updated our charge master, which resulted in a positive one hundred and fifteen thousand more reimbursement for the hospital through the updating of that coding aspects. EMS upgrades. There was replacement of older ambulances with state-of-the-art new appliances and equipment. Implemented a community paramedic program and implemented telehealth program with the EMS. Ancillary service upgrades. Upgraded the purchase of new lab equipment to aid in the care of COVID patients. Upgraded the purchase of new diagnostic radiology equipment. Upgraded the purchase of ventilators for the treatment and care of COVID patients. Information technology improvements. Replaced the hospital's EMR with CPSI. And we're currently working on replacing the time and attendance system to accurately document time and attendance for our workers. The annual salary survey, one of the things that Alliance does is implement and do an annual survey of salaries in the area and in comparison with other hospitals to determine that our salary ranges are competitive to be able to attract employees to the organization. Implemented increased medical training for EMS and identified internal candidates to promote and train in larger roles. Heather Huron is now revenue cycle manager. Is example of trying to use our talent and promote them to be able to take on more expanding roles with the organization. Board education and leadership development, you know, Alliance holds an annual conference, a retreat for board members and Alliance hospital leaders, concentrating on the challenges and opportunities in today's healthcare environment. We were very fortunate to have one of the leading customer service individuals present at our annual retreat, Quint Studer. I'm not sure if you all are familiar with Quint, but he, he's one of our regular speakers at our conference, to be able to work with our boards and our leadership on how to improve our organizations. Employee engagement survey. We do this every two years. We're slated to begin that survey in July. This enables every employee to complete a confidential survey on, you know, their feelings of the hospital, how engaged they are with the organization, and what areas that we need to work on to improve that employee engagement. Because as we outlined earlier, with the salaries escalations that are occurring in the market, maintaining and keeping your quality employees is very important to the organization. And by doing a employee engagement survey, that enables us to determine what are the employees feeling about their hospital and how they're being treated as employees. We also instituted a Leadership Development Institute. It's a quarterly program tailored to assist the needs of the leaders. How do we, you know, one of the challenges we always have is that we take a good employee and we make them a manager. But do we give them the tools that are necessary to be successful in their role? And our Leadership Development Institute helps our leaders to be able to give them the skill sets and the tools to be effective leaders. You know, established an employee retirement plan for full-time employees. Coordinated with Franklin County Health Department to provide COVID antibody shots, testing, and booster shots for the residents of Franklin County. We partnered with TMH to bring Dr. Newton to Franklin County. VA screening, established a VA screening assessment within our clinics in conjunction with FSU and supported through the VA grant funding. Medicare cost report. We annually prepare the Medicare cost report for timely submission of required regulatory reporting through that aspect of it. Payer contracts and agreements, the evaluation of all contracts to identify opportunities that we may be able to have to get better to get better reimbursement. You know, one, again, one of the challenges is, as we outlined, the increasing cost of operating our hospital. But what has not happened throughout the industry is increased reimbursement from the payers. As we outlined, you know, our cost of increased, the salary cost have increased, you know, upwards to 30 to 40%, but reimbursement for taking care of those same patients hasn't increased, but maybe 2 to 3% at most. So working with our payers to be able to ensure that we're getting adequate reimbursement for the care we're delivering to their subscribers. The 340B program. We established a 340B drug purchasing program, which has provided 120,000 net financial benefit in the first six months of the current fiscal year. So we're seeing some significant benefits from the 340B program. Another aspect of accomplishment for the organization is the days in AR. That's accounts receivable. The days it takes to get our cash once we bill a patient or bill a patient or their insurance carrier. The days in AR decreased from 159 days in 2021 to 84 days through March of 2023. That's a significant improvement and helps certainly with the cash flow of the organization. Collections on accounts receivable has increased from 4 point, I mean, 5.4 million in 2020 to a projected total of 6.9 million in 2023. So again, we're collecting more of the dollars that we bill out for services provided. Implemented a contract modeling to ensure insurance pays per contract. Another challenge is, is that we have a number of contracts with insurance companies and they, you know, sometimes frankly don't pay us the way the contract outlines. Making sure that we're holding those insurance companies accountable for what they had agreed to pay for treatment for patients. Now I'll move into operational financial results. What you see here is kind of a six-month trend and then a year-to-date comparison. I'll focus more on the year-to-date comparison. You can see our total admissions for 2023 in comparison to the same timeframe in 2022. Increased 15 admissions, which is about a 50% increase in volume for the hospital. Our observation days, again, increased significantly by 66 more days in observation or what equates to about a 194% increase. And why we see significant increases in observation is that insurance companies, especially Medicare and Medicaid managed care, are taking a much harder stance on what they will approve for an inpatient admission because they'll deny an inpatient admission in lieu of putting the patient in as observation to reduce the costs that the insurance companies have to pay. This is a challenge that we're seeing across the industry and we're working diligently to try to appeal those determinations. When we get a denial for inpatient admission, we certainly are very aggressive in trying to appeal that with the insurance companies to get that overturned to be able to get the higher reimbursement for that patient. Our emergency room visits increased 9.8%. Total imaging procedures increased 2.9%. Our lab tests actually decreased 1.5%, but that's understandable because with the waning of COVID, you know, when you compare 2023 to 2022, the first part of the year, we were still dealing with COVID individuals and testing in our labs. So we're seeing that across the industry where lab procedures have declined because there's less COVID testing being conducted. Respiratory therapy treatments did also see a decline. Again, a lot of that's related to COVID patients that seeing less COVID patients year over year than before. Our clinic visits increased, very positive there. And the billable ambulance runs also increased 5.7%. Looking at the financial results for the organization, again, there's a six-month trend, also a year-to-date comparison. You can see our gross revenue increased by 9.7% or a positive growth in our gross revenue by 655,000. That's significant growth for our organization. Net revenue declined a little bit and that, there's a number of factors that can play into that. Some of that is the COVID funding that has, you know, since stopped. That would have increased some of that net revenue that we would have taken to income in 2022 versus 2023. Even as we talked about earlier with the increase in salaries for healthcare organizations across Florida, we've seen our, we've been able to maintain our salaries increasing only 1.5%. As I indicated earlier in the presentation, we've seen what we have seen across Florida in the increase. So being able to maintain that in comparison to last year is very significant. Our total operating expenses, again, when you compare to other Florida hospitals, to only have increased less than 1% in our total operating expenses for year over year is very significant. If you just take a look at what inflation has done in our nation, you can see we've done a very good job in controlling our expenses. Non-operating income increased by 16% and net income improved by $158,000. You know, and I want to apologize, there is a kind of a typo there with the negative 71%. That should be a 71% improvement year over year. Patient cash collections, again, increased 4.2%. Total cash collections increased 6.6%. And of course, you can see the county hospital subsidy, the sales tax also improved. The county clinic subsidy remained the same. And the county EMS subsidy also remained the same.
Mr. Kozar.
Uh huh.
I got a question.
Sure.
And I could be completely wrong. Mr. Aaron, I thought the county EMS subsidy was around 764,000 of what we approved in the budget. Sorry, I hate to put you on the spot, but I was.
Oh, no, forgot it.
I'm wondering why we're looking at a 382 number when it's 764. Okay, and the clinic subsidy is 120 a year, not 60.
Well, this is just year-to-date.
Yeah, but it shows fiscal year 2022 and that's still off. We've been doing the same for many years now.
It's 764, 252 per year.
Right. And as far as the subsidy that you're getting from the sales tax, I really don't believe it was 651 in 2022.
Yes, sir. So if you look at the top of the grid, it says year-to-date comparison. That is a fiscal year-to-date, fiscal year 2023 year-to-date compared to fiscal year 2022 to date. So to date, we've only gone through six months at this point in time.
Right.
So therefore, there's only six months of data in that year-to-date number.
Okay.
So it's not a full year. So if you multiply it times two, you would get the exact subsidy.
That's why I was asking, because I wanted to clarify, not just for us, but for the public. Because if you look at these figures, it looks like we're not doing something we're supposed to be doing. That's what I'm saying as far as what's going to fund into the hospital and to the EMS and the different things. So thank you.
Absolutely, sir. Didn't mean to mislead anyone.
Talk to him. Mr. Kozar.
Okay. Again, where are we heading? We are currently working with CRS, Medical Benefits. And one of the, one of the aspects, and again, this is really a benefit to those individuals in the county. Looking to work with our patients that may qualify for Medicaid but have not filled out or completed the necessary paperwork or information to get enrolled in Medicaid. These are typically patients that are right now classified as self-insured or self-pay and working with that to improve their eligibility and getting them on to Medicare to be able to get the benefits from, I mean, excuse me, from Medicaid that they're deserving and working with this company to get individuals signed up for the Medicaid program. Repatient is another organization we're working with. It's a revenue cycle solution to help provide payment plans to cover out-of-pocket expenses for both essential and elective procedures. Basically, what this enables the patient to be able to sign up for a non-interest, basically loan to help them pay off their high deductibles or very expensive medical bills. And it enables a patient to work out a patient plan with no interest involved for that patient to be able to get their medical bills paid for. We went live in March and have seen early success with multiple patients already utilizing this mechanism to enable them to have an affordable way to pay what their responsibility to the hospital is. We're working with TruBridge, the billing and collections provider for the hospital and EMS services. We hold weekly calls with TruBridge to ensure timely and accurate billing because nothing is more difficult than having patients get inaccurate or wrong bills. That just erodes the trust of the organization and working with them to ensure that they're getting accurate and timely billing of those bills. And we went live with that back in June of last year. Also, where are we heading? Rural health clinic survey. Annually, rural health clinics have to conduct a survey to ensure compliance with certification criteria at both the east and west clinics. This enable, this ensures that we can get the enhanced reimbursement we get for our rural health clinics and making sure we're in compliance with all regulations there. One of the other aspects is looking at quality and clinical benchmarking. Alliant Hospital's Operations Chief Clinical Officer coordinates these efforts for us and works with the clinical team to look at everything from falls to medication errors to left without being seen from the emergency room, all these aspects, and works with the onsite team to be able to make those improvements in areas. Value-based metric support, continue to support hospital with achieving agreed-upon incentives such as readmissions, index, infection control, and other areas. Strategic planning. Currently, we're going through the strategic planning process. I know the hospital board has recently conducted a retreat to look at where the hospital's going, what are the priorities for the hospital for the future, and how do we develop plans to continue to move the organization forward? One of the things that, you know, I personally stress to all of our facilities as we go through this strategic planning process, to make it a living, breathing document. Too many times, organizations do what they call a strategic plan and it sits on a shelf. How do we incorporate that into our monthly board meetings, into our monthly operations to ensure we're staying on track of where the strategic direction of the organization for its success? Mammography. The new 3D mammography equipment was purchased and currently working towards the ACR accreditation for that equipment. Chronic care management. Again, this is a benefit for a lot of our Medicare patients to support the ongoing health and of the community and encourage preventive medicine. Medicare has a mechanism that, you know, encourages their enrollees to be able to do annual wellness exams and chronic care management for those patients that what we're trying to do is prevent a chronic condition in becoming an acute condition that will end up in the emergency room. Again, the retail pharmacy in Caribou. The swing bed program and inpatient rehab services. We're working with the care coordinator to help grow these services. We've seen significant success with our swing bed patients being able to come back to WHEMS and be able to get their rehabilitative services there versus being, getting those services in Panama City or Tallahassee, being able to bring those patients home for that care. We recently partnered with TMH to establish a shared marketing position to support Alliant Management Facilities in the Pantanal. Hospice identified a room to provide hospice services to Franklin County residents. And we're currently evaluating a new early-out vendor that will increase patient collections after insurance is paid. With that, that kind of concludes my remarks and I'm happy to answer any questions the Commissioners would have.
Commissioner, go ahead, Commissioner.
No, you go ahead first.
No, I was going to say if y'all have any questions.
Mr. Kozar, you know, I was the one that asked for numbers at a meeting, I think it was in January.
Right.
This is not exactly what I was looking for. I was wanting a little bit more of a breakdown. They're good, but a little bit more of a breakdown.
Okay.
The mammography equipment, you guys, to my knowledge, that was given to you from the people that raised money in the community. So you got on here as if you guys purchased that, right?
No, and again, I want to make clear, this is a combination of things Alliant did and the hospital did. So it wasn't one, you know, what I was trying to portray is that this is all what Alliant did. This is just the accomplishments of the overall hospital. And so I apologize if it misled you in any way in saying that we did, we, Alliant did that, but it was just still an accomplishment that the hospital achieved and not something that we did personally because, again, it was funds that were raised by the community. We just helped facilitate, you know, once those funds were received, getting the equipment that needed to be, you know, purchased for there.
Yeah, I'm sure you guys will have to pay for the accreditation, but I just didn't want the community that raised the money, the people, the individuals that raised the money feel negated as if, you know, they didn't, they didn't contribute. They did. And then the COVID, correct me if I'm wrong, but the ventilators, the lab equipment and things, again, it looks almost like it's something that you guys purchased and did, but that was with COVID relief and American Relief Rescue Act funds, correct?
Yeah.
Most of that stuff? I just want to clarify for the record.
Sure.
I don't want, you know, the public to think that Alliant and WHEMS did all this and that, you know, that were the, basically breakdown for the finances is my point.
Right.
And I would like to sit down with you, Mr. Walker, you, Mr. Kozar, and you at some point in time to break down this a little bit further, the finances of it. Because I want to understand, you know, we're trying to provide healthcare for our community. I personally, as well as the board, I'm sure wants good, adequate healthcare for this county. I want to make. I want to make sure we're going in the right direction.
Right.
And to do that, I need to understand how all the financial background and all comes out of it.
No, and, and I'm, I'm more than happy to do that with Commissioner. You know, and again, if you will provide me with what breakdowns you are specifically looking for, we'll make sure that we get that data. But at your earliest convenience, I'm happy to, to sit down with you and David and Tom and we can walk through whatever questions that you have. You know, I, I, I want to be able to be responsive to, to your, so if you just let us know when that would work for you, I'm happy to, to, to do that.
Okay. I'll get with you, Mr. Walker, on some dates. Sooner the better.
David Walker, CEO, yeah, so you can give me dates either this week or next week. The first week of June, my daughter's getting married, so I'd be out of town for that one, but other than that-
I was thinking maybe this week or next week.
Okay, okay.
I'll, I'll shoot you some dates.
Yeah, yeah, that'll work. And I think, you know, when we look at the Alliant report, we're looking at Alliant and Weems, you know, when you gave that report. And so, even, even when we had COVID dollars, we had to identify what we want to spend those dollars on. And so, every hospital in the United States got COVID dollars technically. Some hospitals didn't use their dollars for anything technically, you know. So, when you look at the Alliant report, I'm glad you made clarification, but it's, it's Alliant and Weems all together because Alliant is the management company of the hospital.
And again, that's why I want to sit down so that I know what it all, what, what, how it all breaks down.
Right.
What Alliant's responsibility is contractually, what Weems is, and just kind of figure it out so that I can understand it better.
No, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Who else?
Yeah, I got a few things.
Sure.
Well, to begin with, the Kobe, where did we wind up doing with that?
We, we, we canceled that.
How much did that wind up costing us?
I, I'll have to talk with- So, it's going to approximately, at the end of the day, cost about $50,000 is what it would have ended up costing us. Based on, on where we were in the process when the, when it was canceled. So, two, two months' worth of service.
Well, you know, I know you were on Zoom, Mr. Kozar, you was here, and Mr. Walker was present when y'all presented that. And it was presented to us as though it didn't meet the threshold to come get board approval. That was a $30,000 a month contract, if I'm not mistaken. Attorney Schuler can probably verify that for me. What I want to know is, is why this board wouldn't ask for that type of purchase or to enter that kind of contract? Why, why, why wouldn't we notified well ahead on that?
Okay, initially, for all of our, oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner, my recollection, my recollection is it was about 33,000, between 33,000 and 34,000 dollars a month is my recollection. And then there was like a two-month discount that was supposed to be prorated over the balance of a 10-month term. So, I think the first two months were essentially half of the 33,000 to 34,000, the first two months. And then, what would have been paid during the first two months, if it was paid in full, let's just say 34 for discussion, would then be, have been prorated over the, the balance of the year of the contract. So, ultimately, at the end of the day, if it'd been a one-year contract, it all would have been basically 33,000 to 34,000 dollars a year. That's my recollection.
A year?
A month.
Oh, I was about to say.
Sorry about that.
But, but I'm, I'm going back to that, the impression that we had as a board, whenever y'all had the gentleman from Kobe, is that the reason why we were not approached is because this didn't, you know, what, what is it, that it has to be a certain amount before you have to come get a board approval, correct?
$50,000.
It's at $50,000. That well exceeds, I mean, you're talking 300 and what, right, right at $400,000 to enter this contract for the year. And we found out the week before y'all presented the whole detox thing.
Well, it was, it was, it was my interpretation, just from reading the hospital bylaws, that if we make a purchase, a one-time purchase of $50,000 or more, we come and get that approved by, by the county commission. Weems, you know, we have a lot of different contracts that may end up costing more than $50,000 through the course of the year. You know, so we never have brought those contracts before the county commission since I've been the CEO, since I've been on the hospital board technically, to get approved, you know, in the past. So, that's something that we were under impression, then we, after the Kobe deal, we got clarification from Attorney Schuler, you know what I mean? Basically, anything over $50,000 now need to be approved, and that's why we're going forward, we're doing that.
So, we, we basically just wasted 50 grand. I mean, at the end of the day, that's what happened with the whole Kobe deal, correct?
Yeah, well, yeah, we're not, we're not getting anything out of that, and that's business as usual. You know, business, in business, you put money out to make money. And we, you know, the calculation that worked for us, we couldn't get it done, so we're moving on now. But we still have to look for ways to diversify our revenue and bring more income in.
Well, that, yeah, but what I'm getting at is that could have been diverted if we would have, I mean, that, that's ridiculous. I mean, I'm in business. I'm not going to sit there and do a $50,000 gamble and not get anything. I mean, we got completely no return on that 50,000. That was just out the door because we were in a bad contract. If our county attorney would have been a part of that and negotiated that contract, we might not have been in such a bad situation.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is this also, Commissioner, you know, you know, initially before that, you know, we, we didn't bring any contract before the board that if it wasn't a $50,000 purchase at one time, we brought it to the board. But if the contract ended at $50,000 or more through, at the course of the year, we have never, well, I can't say never, but since I've been the CEO and probably since previous CEOs as well, have, have never brought these contracts before the county commission. In hindsight, yeah, you know, we wish you would have brought it, you know, before the board. It's a bad decision, you know, we're moving on from it.
I mean, even still though, no, we're not moving on yet. If you've got three months that you're obligated to, you got your backup costs, 33,000, that's what, $99,000? That's well over $30,000. I mean, or well over 50,000, I'm sorry, excuse me. So, I still don't, that, that's still, I'm just baffled that we just pretty much took 50 grand and threw it away. Because that's what, in reality, we did over a bad contract. That was presented to us not that way. I mean, I went back this morning and looked at that county commission meeting. And, and I even asked the CEO of Kobe, you know, where, you know, I said, put it, just a pie graph. Give me a, oh, well, you really can't do that in medical. No, you can. And the reason why nobody wanted to answer that question is because I feel that we were being deceived on that. I mean, honestly, I'm just going to be honest with you. That was, and, and just 50 grand, got one. And that, where did that come from? Where did that money come from? Did that come out of the, the, the hospital fund? Or did that come out of your general operation account? What, I mean?
Well, it comes out of our general operational account. Tom is here. But once again, we did not deceive you. We've been, this is something that we continually practice. If a contract was over $50,000 to pay at one time, we brought that before the hospital board and the county commission. But if the contracts that ended, you know, over $50,000 through the course of the year, you know, we did not bring that back, and I did not think that we needed to bring it back. But now, I've been corrected, and so, that will happen in the future.
All right, I got a question also about salaries. You know, you, you were talking about salary increase, Mr. Kozar. It, it, could that be possibly due because, you know, you had a big shortage of nurses during COVID? Some were leaving the profession for obvious reasons and whatnot. And it just got to be a, a higher demand position. I mean, I know it was already a pretty much higher demand position for everybody in medical. But, you know, did we get an increase? You said it was what, 1. what percent of increase on the-
Well, that's total salaries for the organization.
For everyone.
For everyone, increase.
Top all the way down.
For, for everybody, the, the salaries increased 1.6%. And that's for every position now. Nursing could have increased more than that. Some areas may not have increased, but across the organizations, the total salaries increased. Now, what that also takes into consideration, if you have shortages in some areas, you're not paying salaries at that time, but does, you know, that also contributes to the less salaries you're paying. But for example, if you have, I'm, I'm just using this as an example, five RNs that are, five RN positions that are vacant, you're not paying those salaries currently, but then your overall salary expense for that six months will be lower because you're paying less than that, unless you have to use agency or some other mechanism to cover those shifts. If that makes sense.
Okay, now, that brings me to my next thing. We, we requested the salary, you know, the salaries of the personnel out there. And it took about five, I think, was it five weeks before we got it? And then, it's in a format that was just, we're not going to go back on that. But my question is, is this, and I know I went back also to that February meeting when you were first here.
Sure.
It was, it was in January, it was February.
Sorry, I stay incorrect.
But, and you had, had told us about, then, that's when it brought my attention, about sharing our departments and, and, you know, in particular in that discussion, it was our Human Resources Department. Okay, so then I reached out also to Mr. Walker about that in particular because what we're doing is, is, is we're carrying a full salary load also with our HR. And potentially, I'm not sure if Operations Department, have we started doing that sharing with Operations yet? Because that was a potential down the road, as per our discussion, that, but back, I'll, I'll get back to it. But, but what I'm trying to figure out is, is why are we paying a full-time salary plus benefits to pretty much a part-time department now? Because you're sharing it with your other hospitals. Does that make sense to you? Or do I need to-
Well, no, I, I mean, to, to explain a little bit, and I'm going to let David, you know, talk to this in, probably in a little bit more detail. But, you know, we never eliminated any of her duties or time at, at Weems. She was doing this basically on her own time outside of, of her time obligation to the hospital here. We've since stopped that and are not moving forward with that, so there wouldn't be any concern or, or question moving forward. But the, the intention all along was not to take away any of her time or duties or responsibilities to, to Weems, but to use her on her personal time at, at the other organization. David, anything you'd like to add?
Well, the only thing I would add, that, you know, the person, you know, we're talking about worked more than four hours a week at Weems, you know, even on the weekends. But right now, you know, we're not entering into no agreement with Kahoon for HR services, so that's stopped. Now, if that, if Kahoon want to hire that person to provide HR service on their own, they can. But right now, we're going back to what we had before. And then we'll continue to reevaluate our positions at the hospital.
But while you're there, Mr. Walker, it's been brought to my attention that we just hired two new positions, potentially two. Think you're getting an assistant CEO?
No, 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 no. We had Heather Heron was administrative assistant for years, you know, for the CEO and the CFO office. And we kind of like had her duties kind of split up in different places. And so, now we just rehired a person for her position, and she's administrative assistant. And Heather moved up to revenue cycle manager within the organization.
So, so, okay, so I stand corrected that we don't have, because, you know, I mean, I'm thinking if we got all this free time in our HR department, maybe we could just kind of share the burden. I mean, if we got to cut a little, you know, I mean, I, I, I think every medical facility in the nation is going through a pinch financially. I mean, I've, I've heard it from other areas and whatnot, and I've even seen it in certain areas. And what they're doing is, is they're cutting out programs and they're, they're adjusting. And I, I just get, I just want to make sure that we're not creating more overhead because our tree's a little top-heavy.
Yeah.
I mean, it's been that way for a long time. But, you know, I just, I'm just wondering now, are we, because we, we've got housekeeping. We got one person on housekeeping, is what I've been told. I mean, I've heard numerous times during the last month that we didn't have clean rooms out there. I mean, we have an older hospital, but whenever we don't have adequate cleaning, it just makes it even, you know, it looks dirtier, people, you know, I've been getting, I've gotten plenty of complaints about it just nasty. And, I mean, that's not going to attract any, any business. I mean, if we're trying to generate revenue, it seems like we would approach that problem first, you know, and, and have a clean facility. You know, that, that, that was, that was been brought to my attention a couple of times, actually. And I'm not sure what the deal, if you got one housekeeper, obviously, they can't be there 24/7, seven days a week. But are we trying to fill that position? You see what I'm saying? I mean, you know, it's like we're trying to concentrate on the higher part of the bush whenever the problem's down here at the bottom. You know, we're not getting the adequate staff in there to, to, to do what needs to be done. Because when I think of going to a hospital, the last thing I want to think about is going into an unsanitary environment. I mean, you know, you got open wounds, whatever, whatever it may be, but, I mean, that's, sanitation is synonymous with a hospital or any medical facility as far as that goes. But I'm just wondering, or, or, you know, are we trying to get more housekeeping? I'm under the impression, from what I've been told, that, you know, we got housekeeping, you know, pretty much, you know, like nine to five, and then there's no housecleaning at night. Are we cutting back there? But yet, still, we're, we're hiring up here at the top. You, you see what I'm saying? It just kind of seems a little-
Yeah, 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 let me just answer your question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, no, we're not cutting back there, you know. I always had a philosophy is that just because we old, we don't have to look old. You know, we need to make sure our facilities are clean. Now, we had some housekeeping staff that left, and then we had to try to replenish that staff. And we just hired a new housekeeper right now. And so, we have, you know, for, since I've been here from day one, you know, housekeeping, maintenance has always been a, a area, and front desk personnel, you know, has been an area, and those areas there that has been really very hard to staff. So, we've been putting it out, applications out there. We've been interviewing. You know, we've had staff, like I say, we just hired one, we had one to quit just recently. And then we had a full-time staff, just went to PR, part-time PRN as well. So, you know, that's very high on our radar, you know, hiring staff. Going back to, if you look at our operational management structure at the hospital, you know, our top positions, I'm the CEO, we have a CFO here, you know, that's really not, is not a full-time CFO with benefits, so that position, we saving money there. We have, under Tom, organization finance, you know, we kind of resell for those positions there to focus on the money, make sure that we can collect our money. And then you have Courtney Effort, she's under nursing, you know, she can use a nurse manager, which we're looking to fill that position to give her some help. We have Louis with EMS, we have Suzie Busker, she's our practice clinic, clinic manager. She also does front desk work because she's been trying to hire staff. You know, she managed the clinic, but she's been doing front desk work right there. And then we have Jenny Griner, which is our HR person. And so, that's pretty much my top leadership team. So, really, we're not top, top-heavy. You know, these people that work under them, and they need those people to provide those services. But we do pay attention to the direct patient care. You know, one of the things that I've done as a CEO, I made sure that I'm, I'm talking with my front desk people, not only the managers, but the people that are maintenance people, you know, our, our housekeepers, you know, people that are doing the work, because they're the people that can tell me technically a lot of things that are going on. Yeah, we had some shortfalls in the housekeeping area, you know, but it hadn't been like that all the time. Our hospital is a clean hospital, you know, we're old, but we don't have to be, we're not dirty. Now, sometimes, occasion, people may call in and we may scramble to get staff because they're short. They come in and clean those rooms, or come in and clean the restrooms. But I've had people come to me saying, David, man, I came back to this hospital, this hospital's look a lot better than what it was before.
Okay, so we only got one housekeeper that does-
Yeah, we have, we have one full-time, this person may be full or part-time now, but we have, we have another housekeeper, probably about two or three housekeepers, but they're like part-time PRN, meaning that PRN, if they can work, they come in technically. And so, the, the plant ops director is doing the housekeeping work.
I'm sorry, who is?
The plant, the plant operations director, because that's under his unit, he's doing the housekeeping work as well.
So, in other words, whenever there's no housekeeper available, then-
He has to step in.
Operations director comes in and cleans the room?
Yeah, he has to step in, because that's under his jurisdiction. And we all, and we all pull together, as a small hospital, you're going to have certain things that, certain positions that may not be there, but everybody pull in and try to do something, you know, within the hospital.
Okay, I got enough. I'm sorry, is somebody here?
You got all your stuff written down, sir, go ahead.
Nursing, we, we understaffed with nursing, from what I understand. Now, I mean, you've, you've shared us some employment numbers, but the thing about it is, those numbers only reflect a total, and you've got per diem- is those numbers only reflect a total and you, you've got per diem and full-time nurses lumped together. So how many, how many actual full-time RNs do we have versus per diem?
Probably, yeah, probably full-time, I could say, she may have about, about, um, maybe eight to 10, you know, that's just, you know, I need to find that from her. But a lot of our staff work PRN staff, you know, within nursing. I know she had enough to, Courtney, when I say she, Courtney Effort, had enough to fill her full-time, her daytime schedule now, you know, with her nurses. But we could, you know, we can use, maybe, I think she said another nurse or two, you know, especially in the evenings. Her and I was just talking, um, last week about it, she can use another full-time nurse in the evenings, I believe, but she said our staff should be pretty much well. But some of our staff, they work part-time, they work PRN when you come to nursing. And, but nursing is not the only area, you know, we have our clinics, you know, we need, we need a, another front desk, well, we just hired a front desk person in the clinic.
I was actually just going to make that circle because I got another phone call about, uh, we had Dana Whaley and, and I think her PRN was trying to run the desk, see patients. And, and, uh, you know.
Yeah, yeah, that, that, that has happened because we had one full-time, um, front desk person, you know, this person got sick. And so what we did, we rolled the calls over to the Apalachicola office so they can help with appointments and Dana and the nurse begin to work, um, their shift. So, you know, it's been difficult, it's been a difficult time really hiring staff and it's, we're not the only one, the hospitals and community-wide, but it's been very, very difficult. Now, we just hired, uh, another front desk person for the clinic, because you got to understand, my manager at the clinic, manager in Apalachicola, she's been on the front desk between Apalachicola and Carebell for the last eight months, you know, just because, well, six, since December, October rather, um, just because we couldn't get staff coming in. They'll come in and say, yeah, I'm ready to work. Next thing you know, they'll say, no, I, 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 I'm, I'm not taking the job. And so that has happened two or three times, you know, within the last few months.
I understand, I mean, trust me, nobody's wanting to work in a fish house right now, neither. Going back to the swing bed services, uh, that's, it's, it's not anything new. And I know, Mr. Cosar, you come in February when y'all were pitching the swing bed, uh, what's the problem with the swing bed? I mean, this, this goes back for years. We've been trying to get a swing bed, uh, program established out there and it's just kind of like one, one toe in the door with it, really. It's never really got off. Is it lack of services?
I, I don't believe it's a lack of services, although, you know, they do play, it, it does play an important part in that because not only do you need the, the nursing care, you need the therapy aspect of it. You need the physical therapy, the occupational therapy, and you need the speech therapy and making sure that we have those services there. You know, swing bed is, is, is competitive because, uh, a lot of these facilities, and I'm, I'm using the HCA Hospital in, um, Panama City as an example, um, they're opening up a whole floor, uh, for inpatient rehab. That's going to, you know, and what these facilities do, especially as we have to transfer those patients to a higher level of care, whether it's Panama City or Tallahassee, um, you know, we're competing with the facilities in those markets that are trying to get those same patients to come to their facilities for the rehab. So it is a, it is a competitive market. You know, what we're, what our initiative is, you know, through the care coordination position, is to identify those people from Franklin County that need to come back to, uh, or can come back to, uh, Weems for their swing bed program. We're making, I think, you know, significant inroads there in, in trying to get those patients, especially right now from Tallahassee here. Now, our goal is to expand, expand this to the Pan- Panama City facilities to be able to identify those patients that end up in Panama City or, again, Tallahassee and, and making sure that we can get them back to, uh, Apalachicola for their, uh, ongoing swing bed treatments. But, you know, I, I think, you know, one of the challenges we have always is, you know, making sure that those families and it's an, it's an, it's an education of the community to understand that they can get this treatment back here. Because I can tell you at, in Tallahassee, and I'm using them as an example, uh, Encompass, which is a national company that provides inpatient rehabilitation services, they actually have staff that are in Tallahassee Memorial Hospital every day looking for patients to admit to their facility. That's what we compete against. And I think the care coordination is an avenue that we have taken to be able to, uh, on a daily basis, be able to pull out how many patients that are in, uh, TMH that are from Franklin County. And then how do we get those families knowledgeable enough that they need to come back to Franklin for their treatment? It is, it is a challenge. We're competing about, uh, we're not only competing against Encompasses, we're competing against nursing homes that provide short-term therapy services. So it's a very competitive market, but, uh, again, through community education, working with our staff to make sure we have the staff to be able to handle, uh, patients to come back. And, and then of course, working, you know, with those, uh, other facilities that we would, could, we could get those patients back to here, working with them to do that.
And also, Commissioner, you know, one of the things also is that, you know, the facilities, you know, sometimes people may want to go to a shiny facility, you know, um, you know, to get their rehab, then come to an old hospital. But, but rest assured, when we take care of people in our swing bed program, you know, we've got so many testimonies, we just got Facebook recognition, people saying, hey, you know, you all did a great job with my family here. Because the people here care for your community. I'm, I'm a firm believer that we should take care of people in the whole county, you know, because there's a hardship on the families when they go out, you know, to these other counties, you know. So if we can take care of our own Franklin County residents, let's get them back here. But I think one of the other things is that sometimes people gravitate towards the shiny facility, then they wind up having a bad experience there and then they come here. But if they come here first, no matter how old our facility is, you know, the staff there will take care of them and they'll be very, very happy that they're here with us.
Well, I, I wouldn't, I'm, that was just more of a creative discussion. I'm trying to figure out why this hadn't ever taken off, so to speak, or, or gotten, you know, any better, so I guess is the proper way of saying.
It's a very, it's a very competitive, uh, field right now because you have these four profit companies, um, that are, are trying to get, you know, get those patients admitted to their facilities and we're competing with that. And I think through, uh, again, one of the challenges that we have, and I think we're working towards that, but we can, we can never do enough, is educate the community that these services are available here. So when that person from Encompass or from HCA comes to them and says, well, you need to come over to our facility for your ongoing rehab, the, the patient says, no, we can do that at, at, at Weems and I want to go back to Weems. And that's, that's what we do. Because we know that it's much better for the patient, um, than, uh, to them to be close to home versus their family traveling an hour, two hours to, to go see them on a daily basis, being able to be right here in the community. Also, you know, we, we know that that improves their, their outcomes, that improves, you know, the, the overall care, um, that that patient and the recovery that they have.
One more and I'm on hush, I promise. But, uh, you, you just mentioned, Mr. Walker, that, Mr. Ramsey, you are interim CFO? Okay, I, just, what was the other CFO making, just out of curiosity?
The other CFO, um, go ahead.
Sure, the other CFO was Susan Daniels, um, and, and she left us back in June.
What was her salary?
Yeah, she was, I'm, I'm, I'm going off of memory here, so she was approximately about a hundred and ten thousand. Yeah, with ben, and, yeah.
You're, you're, you're filling in as interim CFO at, at part-time, like you said.
Correct, yes.
What I'm looking at right here is your salary's a hundred and two thousand. So, I mean, how much time are we getting?
That, that doesn't just cover myself. We are also, um, bringing in, um, a, a, a controller-type individual from Northwest Florida. So, so she's coming down to help as well. Marcy, um, is coming down from, um, actually, um, Michael's Hospital up in Chipley. And then, so, so it's two people for, for that price tag at this point in time. Yeah, so, yes.
Just getting clarification, because when you said part-time and I was sitting here looking at the, the numbers, I was like, wow.
Yeah, it is, 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 um, salary plus benefits. So I talked with Heather, um, she keeps the, all the financials for me. She said, we're saving about maybe fifty-eight thousand dollars a year, you know, you know, doing, doing what we doing now. You know, and I'm not, you know, we'll, we'll evaluate, evaluate all of our, our positions, but, you know, I don't think that we need a full-time CFO, you know, here at the hospital. You know, we just need to look at what we got, you know, and that's something for all of our positions as well. You know, look at what we got, how can we maximize them, how can we leverage what we already got? But we just got to evaluate where we are, you know.
Mr. Chairman, before, before we stray too far from that discussion, I kind of want to bring something to light that I think might have been lost. So when the famous Mr. Jim Coleman, we all remember, uh, came in front of the board, uh, previous, different makeup of the board, and we talk about this, I don't want the public to think that the county was ne- is not in favor of sharing, you know, administrative staff. The point was, at the time, what we were promised is that by sharing staff, we would save money on administrative costs. So for instance, in the sharing of the HR person, whatever that salary was, it would be reduced, if we were going to share that person, uh, Weems portion of that salary would have been reduced. That was the whole idea about bringing Alliance on, that they would, they would add, we get access to services at a reduced cost. Now, where we are with that, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, commissioners, I, I don't know, but I just want to, to kind of refresh the board's memory and for the New York Commissioners that weren't here when we first started this, that's what it was about. It was about sharing, certain administrative staff would reduce Weems administrative cost. That was one promise and Commissioner Lockley's down to the end. The other promise that they made, Commissioner Lockley, is the building program. That certainly would take, so Commissioner Lockley would take X number of years for them to figure out what we needed and have a plan. And I believe that, uh, at some, these little bugs, and I believe that, um, uh, you know, Mr. Walker, at some point here within the next ninety days, I'm sorry, less than that, thirty, forty-five days, wants to bring the plan to the county for your kind of review so we can start that project. But those are two, there are a number of other things that, you know, that we all agreed to, but those were the two big things. And I kind of want to make sure Commissioner Amerson really understands, you know, that's what it was. Because I hear his questions and I see where he's going, but that's not what was agreed to in the beginning, Commissioner. It was by sharing, our costs would be reduced. We would see less administrative costs.
Have we?
That's a question for somebody else to answer, not for me, sir. I just, but I just kind of wanted to let you know that because maybe that's the question that you just asked, you should, we probably need to be asking. And, uh, Commissioner Ward is saying, you know, where's the beef? Show me the proof that, that we are, basically.
I got some questions.
But I, I didn't mean to interrupt the commissioners' flow, but before we move on, I kind of wanted to let you guys know that, okay?
Well, I understand the lay of the law this way. I mean, they, they knew commission and they need to know. And Alliance doing a good job. If you look at what we had before and what we got now, they, they're holding their own. They're making money. They're not, we're not been in the hole, we ain't been in the pot. We're reaching, grabbing money and stuff. I mean, you take chances, like you asked about the program. Sometimes you take chances and you reach out there like they, they went for that program and they didn't make it. Well, that's part of that. You ain't going to win, win on all of them. It's a win, it's going to win in some situation, you ain't going to lose in some. But they caught it early enough for it to back up. For the fifty-dollar cap, they do that. And that's a one-time deal and it might be in a month. But if they use it more than a month, it across fifty. But at the time when they put it in place, it was fifty. And they got that authority to do it. Maybe if y'all want to change the game, for something they need to fit. But a lot, a lot of things, I, I'd like to see them on, go to, make sure the margin, check out them contract, make sure they're. And another thing is, like, the hospital, it's, it's hard to get people to work, but it for us clean up. If we get a, the money there for us to build it, whatever we put to build. We're giving two million dollars a year, half for operation, half for going in the bank for, for the note. Four hundred thousand dollars a year, they said that was a note due. You can, you can pay two notes a year and still put two hundred dollars up. And you're still getting that penny. I mean, you're going to have two hundred, you're getting that out of the penny regardless of what they make. Those people, they, they ain't, they ain't came in here like from their quarter. I've been sitting on their boat and they come in before they came, before they was here. We had them come in here several times and we, they was asking for money, but they haven't done that. And I was, you know, I've been looking at it. And I was surprised that they paying themselves, whatever. They got to be paying themselves over what they charging. They taking that and they still not asking for money. So they got to be making money.
Commissioner Lockley, uh, what, what we write, what, what we're paying Alliance is five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and sixteen cents a year, roughly. And that's according to your, uh, document that you emailed me. That's a forty-nine thousand, nineteen dollars, eighteen cents a month. Yeah, and then. And that covers, no, that covers your management, that covers the, well, I'll just break it down. Management fee, uh, that's, I'm going to do this by year, that's two hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The CEO, this is his car allowance, pass-through salary benefits, two hundred and five thousand, seventy-five dollars. You know, you've got Karen Tidwell, not sure who she is, but, but, I mean, you know, you got sixteen thousand there, you got a hundred and two for, uh, uh, interim financial services, thirty-five thousand for retro amount from January twenty-third, which I was going to ask you all about that later on, but, um, but that, that's what we're doing. And the only reason I'm asking this is because back, we go back to February when I first met Mr. Cosar, uh, you know, y'all were talking about the new building and getting, you know, wanting to go in that direction of just doing the ER first and piecemealing it out. And, and, and I listened to it this morning and you said, we're, we're getting by. And I remember me telling you, well, I don't want to get a mortgage if I'm just getting by, you know? Uh, so that's why I'm asking these questions because we just, you know, you can't just keep hitting by. We got to get in the black, so to speak. We got to get better. And are we getting there is what I'm, what I'm trying to figure out because, well, we were, you guys have been in contract with the county for, going on five years or four? Three?
Come back on.
Yeah, it's a three-year contract, so they entered, they entered in, um, I think October, November, November, November first, twenty-twenty. And so, and they started in January.
What really worries me is, is that we got a big influx of COVID money that's not practical. And, and reality, when we go back to normal, I mean, we're back to normal now, where, where are we going to be at financially now? We had COVID and you got a big influx of federal money that, that, and we just got by with that? I mean, what's going to happen now that's gone? That's why I was kind of worried about the, the whole COVID thing. Are we grasping, trying to find revenue to make up for, you know, uh, and I'm just, you know, costs, salaries increases that we experienced through COVID? Uh, is, is that why we're in such a, I feel like a panic state to try to generate some revenue out there? Uh, because, you know, this year going, you know, or potentially next year, those true no- because, you know, this year going, you know, or potentially next year, those true numbers are going to show up, because we don't have that federal money that's coming in. What we got? We got millions, you know? Um, and that, that's why I'm asking, is this sustainable or not? Because that, and that's why we need to see these numbers for, for not just us, but for the, the public to understand this. Because, I mean, the public's the one that, that voted on a tax. The public's the one that's vested in that hospital, because that's their means of healthcare. Uh, that, that's why we ask these questions.
Sure. No, and, 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 believe me, I, I understand the questions. I think that, uh, just to, a, a couple points on that. Uh, you know, we here, along with every other hospital, has to look at how we can generate additional revenue, um, because of everything that you outlined, with the, with the, um, you know, rising costs, how do we, how do we continue to grow the revenue side? Um, you can't cut yourself, I mean, you can cut to a certain point, but you can't cut to the point where you can, uh, diminish services that you provide for your community. So we have to look on an ongoing basis, how do we enhance or increase revenue for the organization? Most of the time, that's adding new programs, new services, to try to bring in that additional revenue to, to bring in the organization, you know? And when we compare where we were last year, um, you know, in the first six months of twenty-two, um, you know, we still had some COVID money coming in, and we, and, and I think what I, what we tried to outline this morning, that we're even doing better than we were last year with some of the COVID money that we came in. So we are making that progress, we're making that improvement. I think we're seeing the volumes of utilization at the hospital increase. Those are all very positive signs for this organization as we continue to move forward, is to be able to continue to grow those volumes, to be able to en- enhance the, the revenue that's coming into the hospital. So I, you know, I firmly believe we've, we've made significant progress, even coming out of, as you mentioned, the, the, the COVID money and some of the influx of cash that we had coming in. Uh, you know, a lot of the, a lot of that money had to be tied right, directly back to, uh, costs that were incurred during the COVID period of time. Now, those, those costs, whether it was supplies, personnel, those kind of things, have gone. And, and so hopefully, we're now to a point where we can see exactly where we are, what we're comparing to, and how we continue to grow and move forward. So when I looked at the, you know, and I, and I know we look at the financials, but what was more, uh, encouraging to me is when we looked at the volumes. When you look at the admissions, you look at the observations, you look at the, uh, you know, all those, those volume increases that we're seeing over, you know, over two thousand and twenty-two, that to me is showing that we're making the progress, we're making the, the growth that we need to do. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm extremely encouraged where we're going. Our, is there a lot more work that we have to do? By all means, there's, there's tremendous work, and, and working with hospitals right now, I mean, that's, that's one of our biggest challenges. Um, but, you know, to see the growth that we're experiencing and the improvements that we're making, um, you know, I, I'm, I'm still, you know, extremely encouraged where we're going on what we're doing.
I see though, um, I believe you go, they got a list out there, who doing good, who doing bad. This hospital ain't been on that list since it, it wasn't on it before, but I seen the, the one next to, the neighboring counties, Sacred Heart, it was number fifteen in the, in the, in the world. It's him though, hot pillow here was holding it on. But they got a good list, and they got a bad list. Good list don't show, but them bad, the hospital is doing bad, they got them, they publish it here, you.
But one of the things also, you know, when you look at small rural hospitals, you know, in the state of Florida, I believe, the last four, since twenty-nineteen, four hospitals have closed in Florida. And so rural hospitals, they had a hard time before the pandemic, you know, and so now we're after the, after the pandemic, they're still having a hard time with that. You know, we're like any other small hospital, financial sustainability we want to do. But when you talk about the hospital, you got to also think about EMS and the clinics. So we're more than just that hospital there. You know, we got two other entities that we, that we're responsible for too, you know, we're a collective body with that as well. So, you know, we're not where we want to be, you know, thank God, we're not where we used to be, but we, but we got to make improvements. You know, we're not there yet, you know, no, no rural hospital have a flush of cash, you know, if they're standing on their own, you know, so we're not there yet, and we got to make improvements. We got to try to diversify our revenue here at this hospital, and you got to bring in more programs, you got to make sure you begin to, um, look at your, your inpatient base. Now, a small rural hospital is not gonna have a everyday, everyday census of six or nine per day anymore. You know, twenty-five year critical access hospital, usually that, usually that number's around two to four per, per day. So, you know, you have to think about other avenues to bring in, you know, if you really want a sustainable hospital here. And then as we look to build the hospital, the healthcare trust fund, you know, we got to get it, make sure this thing is separate. You got the healthcare trust fund, kept it out, lay portion, to pay for the hospital on a yearly basis, the new hospital. That money is there. Matter of fact, that money has been there to pay for that hospital on a yearly basis. Then you have the operational part of the hospital, to make sure that we're on even, even foot, that we don't go and try to tip it in that fund, you, you know, to mess up the building of a new hospital. So when you look at building a new hospital, you know, to, to pay the note for the hospital, that money is already there in the healthcare trust fund. You know, that's there. Um, and, but the operations piece of the hospital, we got to make sure that we're financially sustainable, that we don't go dipping into that fund, and then that money won't be there. I just want to just make that clear.
Just for clarification, because I've got to pull my new guy card here. EMS, isn't, isn't that funded through Avalorum?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So actually, that's not funded through the operational?
No, no, no. EMS get about seven, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars a year. It, the money EMS is probably about one point, something.
Yeah, so the, the seven hundred and seven thousand dollars that comes from the Avalorum taxes does not actually cover the cost of providing their services, because Franklin County is such a large county, um, you know, from one end of the county mileage-wise to the other, um, you know, the, the cost of providing EMS services are very, very high, um, to be able to, to bring qualified staff. Louis and his team really have a great team, um, and, 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 um, good equipment. Um, so that, that's, out of the operations of the hospital, we cover the difference between, um, that Avalorum tax and, and, um, the actual cost of providing those services. So there's probably, there's a couple hundred thousand dollars every year, um, at least, that, um, that we cover out of operations.
The reason I'm asking is, is on the initial, I guess, the ballot, when we, uh, you know, voted for this, uh, hospital tax, or we all call it locally or whatnot, but the, it, it states on there, um, if I'm not mistaken, and Attorney Shuler, you may be familiar, remember, but it was, uh, you know, the buildup of urgent care
Caribelle.
In Caribelle, EMS services was the next on the ballot, and then, uh, the operation, uh, and, and, I guess, new construction or whatnot for a new hospital. But I was just curious why, why we were paying EMS out of Avalorum, whenever it specifically states on the ballot that it's EMS? Is that, I don't know if that's a question for, who that's a question for.
Well, I could try to answer it, and Attorney Shuler may, may have answered, but, uh, it was for the EMS upgrades, you know, um, meaning that, you know, in the time we did a new vehicle, uh, in the capital, I lay purchase for EMS, you know, that money can be used for that. But for, um, salaries specifically, you know, I don't think, you know, I don't know if that was put in there, but I don't have it right in front of me now. But I know EMS, you know, the Avalorum taxes, about seven hundred and sixty-four thousand a year, EMS costs probably about one point something a year, so we kind of make up that difference out of the hospital.
The state of Florida tell you, you don't have to have a hospital, you have to have a
EMS.
Yeah. That, that, that's part of the thing, you know. But most don't have it, and then they have to have. I'm proud of that.
I'm not dogging, I'm just trying to put it all together here, because, I mean, like I said, it is, I mean, is that, I mean, when I think about Valorem taxes, I don't think about financing a EMS service with it. I mean, I thought that was coming from the, uh, hospital.
The sort tax, the tax.
Yeah, the tax.
Chairman Commissioners, I hate to interrupt again. So let, let me ask a question. So Tom, you're saying you guys have a number as to what EMS costs to run? That's what you're pretty much?
Uh, yes.
The reason I ask, because for years, this board has been asking for a separation of what it costs to run the hospital versus the clinic versus the EMS, and the board, not, not by, not by any of you gentlemen, but previous CEOs have said, oh, we can't do that, it's too, it's too integrated for us to separate the cost. I'm kind of surprised that you guys are able to say, well, this is what EMS costs. I'm glad, it's a pleasant surprise, because then now we could look forward to getting that separation reported to the board. Again, Commissioner Ward is heading down that road, you know, so yes, I'm, I'm really glad to, to, to hear that, and
EMS roughly costs nine hundred thousand a year.
Yeah, I, I'm glad
Seven hundred plus the two.
So at some point, I guess maybe after the audit is done, you can finally, Commissioner Sanders, you've asked this for years, you can finally get an answer to that question that's, you know, that you've asked for some time.
Mr. Chairman, might be, I've been sitting here patiently, y'all. Can't believe it, can you? But no, um, there's a lot of questions in here, because I know at one point, we, uh, the board, with Mr. Lockley and myself, when we were on it previously, when I was on it previously, we asked for the pulling out of the EMS, the clinic and the hospital, and they said they couldn't, because all of it was going into the general revenue fund, and they couldn't distinguish what was where. My question is, you're giving numbers to us, Mr. Cosar, and you're acting like they're good numbers, when in actuality, to me, they don't look like that good a numbers. Are you gonna have good enough numbers that y'all not gonna have to stick your hand back in the cookie jar again, and borrow money out of it from the trust fund?
Again, that's our goal. And, and, and again, you know, maybe I should clarify. Uh, you know, what I'm seeing is the improvement, um, you know, i- is as far as the numbers. Are we still at a deficit, based upon what I presented this morning? Yes, we're still.
Yes, you are.
But that, that hole is a little, a little shallower than it was a year ago. And, and as we continue to do and implement the things that, uh, will improve the organization, you know, our, our goal is to, to take them brackets, if you, lack of a better word, around, from around those numbers, and make those a positive numbers. That, that's always been our goal. Um, a- again, am I, am I saying they're great numbers? No, but I'm, I'm really emphasizing the improvement we're making to get us from where we were having to come in and, you know, ask more money out of the cookie jar. We're, we're hoping that as we continue to progress the organization, that we're not gonna have to come back and do that.
I understand that. Um, one thing, I got a few comments to make, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. I know we got a public hearing, but everybody's out here, they know what they, you know, they're here for. Uh, one thing is, um, Mr. David, your comment is, that's the price for doing business? You know, the fifty thousand dollars, that's the price for doing business? Uh, that's not a good approach to take. Fifty thousand dollars is fifty thousand dollars of these people's money, whoever pays the bill, whoever don't pay the bill, the state comes in. That's not a good approach to have, uh, to, when you're handling public money, or, you know, the hospital money. The other thing is, y'all were saying that you got people going in to going to these other facilities, like TMH and Sacred Heart and other facilities, about capturing the people that could come back to do the swing bed. Well, my thing is, it starts at home. If you all had a good program to come out here in the communities, and I've said this time and time again, David Walker, and you know I am, come out here in the communities, show what is available, what is not available, but what you're working on, and have Weems Memorial Hospital come in there, not your clinics and everything, your hospital, and come out there and say, hey, come on, and this is what we can do. If you have a loved one that has a knee replacement and needs to have rehab, don't use Center Point, don't use Seven Hills, come back to Appalachia. We like to take care of our own. You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
That way, but, and if y'all keep it just like you got it, you're never gonna have it any better. You gotta get out there, you gotta make those goals, you gotta meet those goals. And anything that we as commissioners can do, I'm all the, how many times have I said something positive about, about Weems, not TMH, but Weems? You know what I'm saying? And that's it. This is home. It don't, it don't matter what the building looks like. It matters if Miss Mary's in there, or Miss Heather in there, it matters that, because we know those folks care about it. But we're never gonna get no better than what we have right now, until we get out there and we make it better. We make it better. And that's it.
Yeah, and part of our strategic plan, you, you're right, Commissioner, part of our strategic, strategic, less strategic plan is community outreach with the swing bed program. And a couple of patients that we got back in is because, you know, they demanded that their loved one be brought back to, um, Weems, instead of going to other hospitals. Even when the regional hospitals say, no, we gonna send you to encompass, they say, no, 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 we want to go back to Weems.
That's right.
And so, and so we will work on that. That's part of our plan, to begin to work in the community and tell the families more about what we do, so when they have a loved one get services, they can break the person's back, bring the person back here.
We used to have health fairs around the camp. We used to go out there and check people's blood pressure. We used to give them little trinkets, you know, coming out there. And we used to give them a little magnet that says Weems Hospital. You know what I'm saying? Put on your refrigerator, first thing you see is Weems Hospital. You know, who am I gonna call if I get sick? Right now, you gonna call ambulance, and hopefully we'll, you know, we'll have the response that we need to have. And, and I've always had good response from them. But that's the thing, don't, don't come and approach this as a, oh, well, we, we're, we're caring our own. It needs to be, we, we're caring our own, but we can do better. That's the attitude you need to have. And, and I know that, because I have to push forward every day, just like everybody else has to, in these days and times. The other thing is, I'm concerned, um, how many EMS units, how many ambulances do we have running in the county?
We have three running in the county.
Three running the county.
And, and we have three running and also a EMS truck.
Yeah, the, the chase truck, what I call the chase truck. Yeah. Well, uh, it wasn't that long ago, just a few weeks, a couple of weeks ago, that, uh, there was a call for EMS out there on Alagoa Point. And there was no ambulance in the eastern side of the county. They made a call, they had to get the ambulance to come out of Appalachia. Took them fifty-five minutes to get there, okay? Thank God, this was not a life-threatening issue. That's the reason why I enforced with the people of Alagoa to Point on Saturday, that they keep the mutual aid, uh, going with Walco County, because Walco County can be there in ten minutes versus fifty-five minutes. That is not acceptable. That is not acceptable. It does not say nothing bad about your ambulance service. It, it has to do with, you know, we went through this before, where we didn't have but two, two ambulances, and it was BLS, and they were basic life. And, you know, you, you can't do that. You got to do better. So whatever we have to do to keep it going, because thank God, on Alagoa to Point and other parts of the county, you're gonna have anything and everything that happens. So we need to do better on that. And the one thing that I asked back in February is, I wanted to know, when are you all, and thank you for your, your, um, uh, uh, salary, uh, papers that you sent us, and, but I'm concerned, because your EMS, your EMTs and paramedics, because some of them make, make them eleven, thirteen, fifteen dollars an hour. Now, is that the going rate?
No, no, well, let me just, for EMS, we, we had to bring all EMS, EMTs, and paramedics, we had to bring them up to fifteen dollars per hour. So all of our EMS, uh, EMTs and paramedics should be making fifteen dollars an hour at the, at the base minimum, because we had to bring that up through a state of Florida, OCA.
But you had eleven and thirteen and fifteen on there.
Okay, well, I'll double check that, yeah, 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 but they, yeah, but they are up. And, and Louis and I have talked about this before, is that, you know, I mean, you know, I was asking Louis, are we competitive, our EMS rates with our neighboring counties? And Louis said And Louis say that we are competitive technically. Now, we can do better with that. We can bring them up. Um, the issues that we have with EMS, um, is that, you know, people really don't leave us too much because of the salary. They leave us because of the state of Florida retirement system. Most of your EMS personnel looks to, from Louis, conversation with him, you know, they look to get into a state retirement system, per se.
I know. I talked to Louis.
Yeah.
But the thing about it is though, Mr. David, I want y'all to understand something that I've been trying to make y'all understand for a while, is EMS is our hospital in the eastern part of the county. Okay? So you figure this, you only have, back when that call came in for Alagoa de Point, you only have one ambulance in the whole seventy miles of this county. That is unacceptable. Unacceptable. And that's what I'm trying to tell you. Now, we're make, trying to make it better to get the EMS, uh, EMS unit out of Atlanta. But still, you're gonna be mauled. Mauled. Is that one thing?
Yeah, because what happened is we have, um, if EMS leave the county, see if they go transport a person to Bay County.
Not yet.
You, you know, that's when, that's what happened unless, we, we have a conversation with Louis also, unless we look to get another EMS vehicle, some on the other end over there. Now, since I've been the CEO, and Louis can tell you this as well, you know, we, we, with the hospital board, we made a lot of investments in the EMS, you know, with the equipment, with, with machinery, you know, with training, you know, because we, we, we understand, you know, EMS is the first line of defense for some people that are far out in our areas, that they can't get to a hospital, per se. But we'll continue to look at that and we have that conversation with Louis.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna tell you this and I'll finish it up with this, Mr. Chairman, for right now. Everybody may not use our hospital in this county. Everybody may not use it. But everybody's gonna use the emergency medical services because that's who that call. Okay? So think about that.
Okay.
And I appreciate your time coming here and telling us, but I do not like them numbers.
Yeah.
I can tell you right off the bat.
Yeah, and we got to get better. And just, let me just clarify with the, with EMS, um, just testing Louis, the EMS cost is about 1.6 million per year. That's how much EMS costs to run. 1.6 million. I'm sure Tom would do some deep dive in those numbers as well as audit. But we can also break out how much the clinic is costing, how much the hospital is costing. So we can get that separated for you all, you know?
I got a whole lot more to say, but we got public hearings and everything, and I know the chairmen want to move ahead.
Can I just say one quick thing?
And I got one more thing after him, real quick.
Promise.
But, uh, but, but, you know,
We will have a public hearing today.
Back to what we were talking about was, uh, the, uh, the, the sales tax, you know, every year that sales tax is increasing. Shouldn't our operations be looking a little better? Or, you know, the, the shared administration, the, 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 um, what we were talking about earlier about the decrease in, uh, in the, uh, that, you know, my brain left me looking at all these people in here. But, uh, you, you know, with all this, uh, shared administration and all the, you know, it's supposed to save us money, that's what's got, I mean, we're, we're back to basic math again. You got, uh, the, the sales tax is bringing in more money every year, just like it, it is doing with T D C and, and everything else around here because we're getting that influx of more people. And they're in here spending money. But it just seems like the operation's riding the coach right on up. And, and that, that gives me, leaves me back to have, being hesitant about, are we, is, is the ship ever gonna ride itself? You know, I mean, if, if we're increasing in the sales tax, uh, you know, are we just gonna keep following and spending more money? Spending more money? Because that's what it seems is, is, is happening here. And I'm gonna leave it alone. And I'm gonna let, uh, Commissioner Ward, I'll, I'll be in touch.
Yeah, yeah. And, and other thing too is that, you know, the other thing too is that, you know, you look at Weems, I'm, I'm not gonna sugarcoat this. I'm just tell you like it is right now. If you look at Weems years ago, you know, we've always been bad financially, totally, totally bad financially. You know, since Alliant came aboard, digging into finances, trying to get us on the right path. That's where we at right now. And every rural hospital in the nation, in the state, you know what I mean, is facing the same situation we're facing. But right now, I think we probably got a better understanding of where we are with our finances. Now, we just got to get better with it.
Mr. Chairman, just, just real quick, Thursday, I'm available. I'll be at the hospital at nine, ten.
Okay.
And if you could have the H R person there as well, and I want a balance sheet, I want a general ledger in addition to some other things that I might, might think of, and I'll, I'll email you.
Yeah, email it to me.
Because, again, like, like Commissioner Amoson and, Commissioner Sanders and Mr. Marone stated, I, I wanna see the beef. You, you sit here and you, you give a presentation of what you guys have done, where we're headed and all this and that, you know, I could throw any number out there and people may think it's correct. I, I wanna see actual legit paperwork numbers, period. Because as Commissioner Amoson said, I think y'all a little top-heavy too. Where's the nurses? Where's the medical staff? The, the radiology people, the lab people, uh, the respiratory therapists? They're the ones, or the, or the, the beef of that. I'm not saying that y'all's job's not applicable or, or valid. I'm not saying that. But you can't run a hospital without doctors, nurses, medical staff, period. And you're paying a CFO a hundred and something thousand dollars and you got this nurse down here doing bedside care, getting paid fifteen, twenty dollars an hour? That's unacceptable. We've gotta fix it. We've gotta fix the problem. I'm not saying there's a problem, but I wanna see numbers because I wanna make sure. Apparently, you guys, you just said that the contract was October of twenty twenty, November of twenty twenty? And you said it's a three-year contract? So it sounds like we're up for contract renewal this year?
Yes, you are.
Okay, we need to make sure if, in addition, I wanna, I would like an Alliant contract. I want the actual contract that we signed with Alliant back in twenty twenty. And I'd like that as soon as possible. I could review it before our meeting on Thursday, if, if possible. And, and I'll meet with you guys on Thursday to, to get the actual numbers, to figure this out, figure some things out.
Okay.
So I, I think to summarize some of what's been said today, especially as far as what we're looking at, trying to generate new revenue streams and our, have people in our community take advantage of things the hospital offers that maybe they don't know that we offer. People do business with people. People do not do business with entities, period. It doesn't matter what brand you have on the door, none, it doesn't matter if you're part of a national chain or not in business. People are gonna do business with that smiling face, that person they interact with, those people that are a part of the staff and make the administration of any entity. People do business with people. So I think that's gonna help it, uh, ride itself in some of what we're facing. But the bigger issues we're facing, and I'll just go ahead and say it, our problem is, and we've done this for fifteen years and it hasn't worked yet, is we are halfway in and we're halfway out as a county with the hospital. We either need to be all the way in where they're all county employees, or all the way out where somebody else is, is running the hospital and somebody else has got their name on the lease. That's what's causing the difficulty. Because as we all went through, I, and, and I'm not trying to harp on anybody, I'm really not, but in our current state, as the hospital is under our purview, if we ask for a document, I'll, I'll say it this way, I will not ask for another document and it take over a month to get it again. That will not happen. I'll pass the gavel and I'll make a motion. We will not do that again. And that's all I have to say about it. Anyone else? Thank you for your time. Uh, Mr. Walker, we are, since we had people waiting on a public hearing that was advertised for ten, we're gonna go ahead and delay you for now, if that's okay with the rest of the commission, and go ahead and handle these public hearings. Is that okay with you, sir?
Yeah, because you still need that approval for the, to discuss Southland.
Yes.
So I was gonna ask, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's fine. Yes, we still have to do that. I know that.
Yeah.
I, I'm just making sure your time's okay. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna take a short five-minute recess. We'll come back and start the first public hearing.
Managing diabetes can be challenging, but getting help is easy with health education at no cost to you. Ascension Sacred Heart Gulf provides living well with diabetes classes. Attend a class to gain insights into how to eat healthy, get active, manage medications, check blood sugar, and control stress. For the class schedule, location, and more information, call eight five zero two two nine five six two zero or visit ascension.org/gulfdiabeteseducation. This message sponsored by the Health Hub of Gulf and Franklin Counties.
Embrace the pace on Florida's forgotten coast.
Hi, I'm Carol Landis. I'm a professional Realtor in love with St. George Island. When my husband and I and our dogs moved here in two thousand and two, it was the beginning of an adventure that has never grown old in a community that is amazing. If you're thinking about moving to St. George Island or investing in our world-class real estate, then this community will be as important to you as the sand in surf.
Well, Karen's amazing. Much more than an agent. She's become a friend. And since we bought the house, we've needed work done, and she knows everybody there is that can help us with that.
One of the key elements for the historical growth and value of St. George Island real estate is the fact that it's a great place to vacation and to live. The beauty of the Gulf of Mexico with its white sand beaches and blue sky has always been a magnet for me. It was love at first sight. As your Realtor, I can help educate you on the various aspects of buying and owning coastal properties. From taxes to coastal setback lines to where to find the best oysters, it's all part of being your Realtor.
Too often our friends tell us of it being a hardship to buy a house and the, the state, the agent was gone as soon as the closing. We've had quite the opposite experience with Karen.
If you're looking to buy or sell real estate on St. George Island, I'd love to work with you. Please call or text me at eight five zero six five three seven seven five three.
We would like to welcome you to Florida's Forgotten Coast. We hope you enjoy your stay here in Franklin County. We'd like to take this opportunity to remind you of some of our safety guidelines for our beautiful beaches.
Here on the Forgotten Coast, we love pets. Please observe our lease laws on the beaches and on other public places.
When visiting Franklin County beaches, please be aware of beach flags and surf conditions. For the most recent information on these conditions and more, please download the Forgotten Coast mobile app.
It is very important to us here in Franklin County that we make all our beaches accessible to everyone. We have placed mobile masters at different assets throughout the county. We plan to add more the coming year.
Franklin County has some of the most beautiful beaches in Florida. Let's keep it that way. Remember to remove all your trash before you leave and leave only footprints.
We welcome you to enjoy our beaches. But at the end of the day, please remember to remove all your beach gear before nine P M. Remember, May through October, we have other visitors here, the sea turtles. So we need to keep our lights off at night on the beaches as well.
Your safety is important to us, so please remember when visiting our beautiful beaches, you're swimming at your own risk as we do not have lifeguards on duty.
We hope you enjoy your stay here, but please remember, no glass bottles on our beaches.
When visiting our area, please park in designated parking places only. Don't park in the county right-of-way or on private property without permission.
Go to florida'sforgottencoast.com backslash beach safety for a complete list of county and beach ordinances and safety rules.
Thank you.
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 Thank you for visiting Florida's Forgotten Coast. Help us keep our beaches as beautiful as they are today for future visitors and residents.
We understand that managing a healthy lifestyle while balancing life's other demands can be challenging at times. So the Florida Department of Health in Franklin County is dedicated to supporting you as you take care of your health. We offer many resources and services, including, but not limited to, COVID-19 vaccines, breast and cervical cancer screens, tobacco prevention and sensation education, and information on heart health, nutrition, and physical activity.
Maintaining a healthy lifestyle can help to prevent chronic conditions like heart disease and stroke, diabetes, C O P D, and obesity. Healthy lifestyle changes can also help you maintain a healthy immune system. Tips to good health include eating a healthy diet, being physically active, avoiding tobacco and excessive alcohol, managing stress effectively, getting enough sleep, and seeing your medical provider for routine checkups.
To find out more about how we can help you maintain a healthier lifestyle, please visit franklin.floordouthelp.gov or call eight five zero six five three two one one one.
...stuff went longer than what we expected. We have to again be back here at 1:30. So you don't have to duplicate each other today is all I'm saying. Now, I do have a couple that were turned in a card. The first one is Ms. Sharon Rigsby. If you're wishing to speak, now's your time.
Morning.
Morning.
I'm Sharon Rigsby and resident of Alligator Point. And I just want to voice my support for the ordinance. I want to thank Commissioner Sanders for her leadership in bringing this forward. And express my appreciation to all of you guys so much for your careful consideration.
Thank you. Michael, this was turned in online. So I don't know if they're online or in the room. Sutton Webb, are you in the room? Is that online then?
Sutton Webb, he's right there.
Yeah.
Mr. Webb, I'm going. I apologize. I'm going to allow... Couldn't hear me. Sutton Webb, you are unmuted and you may address the board.
I just want to thank everybody for their hard work on this ordinance. I'm in full support of it and just wanted to share my support committing today. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. John Dexter Thornton, I think he's also online.
Let's see here. That's probably this one right there. Where it says John D.T.
Yep.
If you would unmute your device.
Just wanted to thank everyone and express our full support of this.
Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else in the room? Before we go on, if you're... I know this is kind of unorthodox, but if you're here and you're in favor of this ordinance, can you please just say in the front by lifting your hand up? Okay. I think that'll help us out tremendously. Is there anyone in the room that wishes to speak or that's not in favor that wish to speak? We're not trying to cut anybody off. That's not what we're trying to do. Just trying to make our best use of time. Anyone that wishes to speak now that hasn't turned in a card, that's fine. You do have time to speak if you desire to do so.
If not, you do have one raise hand, Mr. John Berry.
Yep.
Mr. Berry, you're unmuted. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One little item here is that I noticed it on a next door posting, "Harry Morrison Drive", I guess it is, does not tie into Alligator Drive. Hypothetically, it comes in through, I guess, Tom Roberts in a way that comes in front of the old firehouse. Does there have to be any additional language to include that? Or is that automatically included? Even it connects in a roundabout way?
Teresa, I thought you read the language. I thought the language included not just Alligator Drive, but the adjoining roads to it.
Roads that... Let me look at the specific language. I'm not aware that... I'm not that familiar with the actual lay of the land of Harry Morrison. So I have to look at the map and see.
It's in your...
It says furthermore, this authorization of the golf carts includes... I'm flying this plane as I build it, so just one second. Public roads located within all current and future subdivisions which can access Alligator Drive within that part of Alligator Point authorized. It doesn't say connected to. It says access. So I think it would include any of those subdivisions which can access Alligator Drive. If that access happens to bypass through another road that's connected. It's in this case, say, Harry Morrison is a subdivision that's not connected directly to Alligator Drive has been pointed out. But Harry Morrison connects with an adjoining subdivision which does provide access to Alligator Drive.
That's fine.
I let into that one because I did not know that about Harry Morrison.
I think that's fine. You've clarified it. It's on the record and that's all we needed.
I concur.
Anyone else wishing to speak publicly today? All right. Back to us. What's the pleasure of the board? Do you have any discussion?
Anybody? You brought... Mr. Berry brought up the question. So you're acknowledging it. You feel like it's all those that's connecting through not through that subdivision particularly, but through adjoining subdivisions that join on to county roads and then on to Alligator Drive?
Yes, ma'am. The ordinance that the board is considering, it refers to all current and future subdivisions which can access Alligator Drive within that part of Alligator Point authorized for golf carts. So that's my interpretation. However, the county commissions are the elected decision makers. But I think the language is sufficiently clear that would allow you to make that determination.
Okay.
I guess about when they roll you the hand, I seen about ninety percent. I seen about ninety percent for... Is there anybody against?
If there's nobody against it, and this has been a call from the people to this board to approve golf carts for Alligator Point, and this is our one and only time that we're going to deal with this because it's going to be hopefully approved, I make a motion that we go ahead and allow this ordinance to take effect for Alligator Point.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by two. Commissioner Ensign, Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion before we vote?
Just one thing. Make sure the road department, again, make sure the road department puts out proper signage now.
Well, that's the next action item for the board to consider.
You did say there was two actions to take, correct?
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion on this motion before we vote? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous vote. Father, no, the next thing... The next thing we need to take action is about the speed limit, correct?
Yes, sir. I was going to... For the next action item, the board will need to take action to reduce the speed limit beginning at the intersection of Pine Street and Alligator Drive. Since there are two connections with Pine Street and Alligator Drive, I will state that the speed limit would need to be reduced at the intersection that is closest to Highway 98. Speed limit from that point for the remainder of Alligator Drive to its terminus on the other end of the marina would be changed to thirty miles an hour with a further provision that the road department will seek guidance and receive guidance from Dewberry in terms of how far to space out the speed reduction. Again, I think they told me it's a quarter of a mile for each increment of reduction. But they will get the... The road department will get the advice from Dewberry and then also as a direction to the road department to put up a... Or whoever is responsible for putting up a road sign where that speed limit changed and essentially there's a new traffic pattern or new traffic speed limit, I mean, whatever the appropriate verbiage is. But that would be the next action item for the board to consider.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ensign. Do you make your second, Commissioner Lockley?
Yeah.
All right, and second by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion?
A brief question. Over there where the new part of the road has came in on the old part of the road that we just got finished, the county just got finished, it's twenty-five and it's twenty-five there because there's no barricade on the border side. Does that take effect or it going to be changed to thirty-two also?
I'm not... You mean right there where the old...
Where the county just completed the project.
We repaired the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
Going to be all thirty?
It's all thirty, but are we talking about that sharp turn?
Does that one place?
Not one place. Yeah. Uniform traffic code says thirty miles an hour.
Okay. Okay, this one, all right.
I have one other thing under discussion. Just because we're looking at changing speed limits in several areas, we need to make sure that they put appropriate signage coming into the point. Needs to be the same way going out. Because it's going to be in different areas than it's been before. You know what I'm saying?
Good point, Mr. Chairman.
Just to mention. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. All right. So now we're up to another public hearing, correct?
Yes, sir. The next public hearing is... It's been duly advertised. You're in a procedural position to move forward this morning if that is the board's choice. If the board is ready to move forward this morning, my first question is, do you have any questions for me?
I have some questions for you.
Yes, sir.
So I'm the one that brought this issue forward, not trying to get rid of everything, but trying to address it before it became an issue. If there's anything that I've tried to change in my time on the board is for us to be more proactive instead of reactionary. So that's the reason we're even talking about this issue today. It has come up in doing research, understanding actually Commissioner Ward brought up at the last meeting. The state of Florida defines an e-bike the same as a regular bike. So I think we can have a valid discussion about those on the beach. But as far as the multi-use paths, sidewalks, roads, I think we have a hard time making that kind of stance to deal away with them. Because if the state refers to them as a bike, we're trying to define them in another way. And I think it's going to be very difficult for us to do. So just, I don't know if we can limit it just to the beaches because I could see where that'd be a problem. And I know there are people with mobility issues. I'm not trying to be insensitive to that. But I'm also thinking of those that don't really have mobility issues that can rent with these e-bikes, you know, that can have enough fun on the sidewalks and the streets without taking it to the beach where families are and gatherings of people and those kinds of things. Given that they are... I know the state defines them that way. But given they are motorized in any form or fashion, I don't think they have a place on our beaches. But I just wanted to have that discussion before we go into this ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, the board does have the discretion to reduce the geographic areas identified in the ordinance. What you could not do is expand it into a new geographic area that hasn't been advertised for a public hearing. So the board can, as I just said, I think that answers it clearly enough. All right, so you ready for me? Any other commissioner comments before I proceed?
I got one question with that. Now, would that exclude the state park? I mean, if the state says they can ride them on the beach or whatever, I mean, would that encompass the state park as well? It's still our beach, correct?
Well, it's within your regulatory jurisdiction.
I just didn't know.
As written, it presently says all public beaches within unincorporated Franklin County. So unless the board takes action to exclude... You're probably thinking about the state park.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about on St. George Island.
You could also exclude that geographic area if that's what the board's inclined to do. But if you don't exclude it, it would be included in the prohibition because it is a public beach within unincorporated Franklin County.
It's not that. I was just trying to get clarification in case, you know, it goes back to the enforcement issue, our law enforcement, our local areas is going to have to enforce it. And then you got somebody saying, "Well, you know, I was on the state park and the state, you know, I'm just trying to..."
Yes, sir.
Because I'm sure I'll give a phone call or an email.
I don't know that the state park allows e-bikes on the beach. Do you do? Okay. So they do.
I didn't see you.
I didn't see you either, Josh. I apologize.
That's what I'm saying. Discussion, Mr. Chairman?
I was just trying to narrow it down to say if we do take any action today, that's the only action I would be looking to take. I'm fine with taking no action. I'm just trying to clarify before we start.
Well, discussion, Mr. Chairman. I've had quite a few people since Saturday call me about this. And I didn't know it was a big thing, but it is. It is the big thing in Franklin. It is a big thing. But the people that has called me is pretty much middle-aged to older. And they've invested a lot of money and they said, "We just don't want you... We don't ride our e-bikes on the beaches anyway, but we do want to be able to ride them on the multi-use path." So this would still allow them under the state statute that they could be able to do it. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a quick question for Attorney Schuler. In the, what's considered the unincorporated part of the county, I know that McKissick Beach is included in this. And I remember, if I remember correctly at the last meeting, did you ever reach out? Because I don't want to do anything. I've spoke to the mayor about this, but I know you were going to reach out to Attorney Hartman because I have to, you know, I don't want to do any... Obviously, I want to respect their wishes as well and what their thoughts are. Did he have any...
I did speak with Mr. Hartman, who's the attorney for the city of Caravelle. And, you know, like myself, he's not authorized to speak on behalf of his client without the client's permission. But he did not think it was going to be a problem.
Thank you.
I mean, it is in the unincorporated area and he understood that. And if he had voiced any objection on behalf of this client, I would have brought it back to you first because you asked the question and then back to the board in this setting. But he did not.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? I feel... I feel good about it if the attorney says we could do it, just limit it to the beaches, not to allow them on the beaches. Or if you all want to just wait until the next meeting and get the attorney to brush it up a little bit and clean it up a little bit and we know exactly what we're going to be doing.
The only issue... Yeah, the only issue we're running into even if we do them on the beaches is enforcement.
Yeah.
We have issues with enforcement already.
Attorney Schuler, Mr. Chairman, again, like with the last ordinance, did you... Is the sheriff... I see we've got a couple deputies here. I don't want to put them on the spot. Actually captains, I stand corrected. But that's the biggest thing. And I'm in agreement. I agree with what the chairman and Commissioner Sanders said is I had a lot of people, which at the last meeting I said, you know, I'm not a big fan of the multi-use path and prohibiting them on that. Maybe the beaches if anything, because I do know a lot of people that have mobility issues. And I even had a younger person reach out to me and said that she was diagnosed with cancer. And during her cancer treatment, she didn't have the power. They liked to bike ride for the exercise. She couldn't pedal her own bicycle because she's so weak. But using the e-bike was able... She was able to afford to enjoy getting out and exercising. So again, it's going to be... And when I was asked about this from an individual, I said, you know, it's... We can make, you know, ordinances all the time. It's about enforcement. Our county's seventy miles wide and our law enforcement are already have enough on their plate. And again, it's... We make policy. It's all about the enforcement of that. And that's nothing that you're in charge of, but I just want to make sure that, you know, our sheriff's office and all have the capability and all as well. So that's something we got to look at. But I'm for just the beaches as well. And even then, because I've got concerns of people that were riding the e-bikes on the beach and the dunes on the dunes and any kind of bird sanctuaries and on the turtle nest and things like that. So... And I know we still are not quite to that point. So I guess we'll just probably, I don't know, let you do your thing and go from there.
Commissioner Ward, I did speak for the sheriff about this ordinance as well. Don't recall there being any objections except for one. He was not in favor of basically giving a warning and then a ticket at one amount that's lower than if it's a third offense and another ticket at a higher amount. He didn't say what it should be because that is your purview. However, he said that since we asked him, that he wanted just a penalty. If there's a violation, this is the penalty. There's no warning. There's no increase. It's just this is the penalty for the violation of the ordinance. And of course, that is all subject to the officer's discretion in the field depending on the circumstances. Because as we all know, they just don't pull you over and write a ticket every time. But in this case, what I have provided as a penalty for your consideration would be, I think, a hundred and five dollars? Yes, a civil fine of a hundred and five dollars per violation.
Seventy-five?
Hundred.
In terms of tabling this to a time certain, that's at the discretion of the board. If you do that, then it needs to be tabled to a certain date, time, and place, otherwise we have to re-advertise. I can tell you based on the comments that you're making here, you know, I can, assuming the board adopts the ordinance as modified to apply only to, I will say, public beaches that are owned by local government units, which would well know. Because if we exclude the state lands, then that would also take care of the McKissick Beach. My suggestion, based on the comments I'm hearing, the prohibition would be on the public beaches that are owned by Franklin County and by the state park system, except for St. George Island State Park. Because I think Commissioner Amerson may have been going down the line of not wanting to...
No, it wasn't that. I was just trying to figure out if the state could supersede what we say as far as on their beach or the park's beach. And that's what my question was.
I'd rather see it on paper. I don't mean no harm. But I'd rather just see what we're going to do on paper because we had a lot of paper on this golf cart stuff. But let... And then get the comments from the public, you know? Because we get them all the time on the different issues. But I'm thinking if we're having a problem with the beaches and destroying the dunes and stuff, to limit it to that maybe, like I said, but...
Then it should be re-advertised, Commissioner Sanders, if you're wanting additional public comment on it.
It's your district, Commissioner.
Go ahead. Well, I was going to say, as of right now, they can ride their e-bikes, right? I mean...
There's no restriction.
There's no restriction. So what I would... I'd just make a motion to table this until you could get the language on paper. As Commissioner Sanders stated, we'll just re-advertise it and then we'll vote on the ordinance. I mean, it's not going to hurt them right now. It's not... We're not stopping anybody from doing anything. So we shouldn't have a complaint there. And we'll just give it its due diligence and let it go down.
Can I get some guidance from the board in terms of the public beaches to be subject to the ordinance? I understand the beaches that are owned and they are public Franklin County beaches. What about the state park for St. George Island? What about the state McKissick Beach, which is also state lands?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask what... The gentleman that works for the state park, could you come up, please? I got a question. Best way to do this. Or you stay there. I'm not running this show. My question is, have you had any complaints about e-bikes on the beaches in the state park?
Not one.
None? Yeah, because, I mean, just from my experience, you know, trying to get down that east end fishing and stuff like that, it's a calf killer.
That's the thing is, we see it more as an assistive device for people that, especially with mobility impairments, or just assisting them to get through that soft sand. And we've not had any complaints or issues either with the public or with our natural resources. We've never had any documented incidents of people driving through the dunes over a sea turtle nest or even disturbance of the sea turtles. What we do see more is just along on the main park drive from the four miles from the campground all the way to, you know, to get to the bike path at the beginning of the park there. But I do see some user groups on the beach and they do seem to be doing it responsibly.
Thank you.
That's good to know. Thank you, Josh. Yes, sir.
Mr. Schuler, you said the fine would be a hundred and five dollars, right?
If that's what the board approves, yes, sir.
Okay. What happened if you get repeated penalty?
Then it's a hundred and five dollars every time.
Every time, okay. Drop it on.
I guess chopping a toe off didn't work.
No, it didn't work. No, it didn't work.
I think I probably...
Then they won't be able to ride a bike.
So we just cut a toe off.
I'll say this before we get too much further. If we're going to start trying to piecemeal out where it's going to be, you're talking about incredible, incredible enforcement. If it's going to be only from this spot to this spot and then it's over here at this spot...
Then you got people confused.
You know, that... Listen, again, I brought it forward because some people expressed to me potential safety issues. Nothing's happened. Nobody's been harmed. But there have been several residents that brought, you know, safety issues forward to me that they didn't feel safe. There's nothing we can do to change that. You know, because again, if we're going to allow, as the state does, to be used, even trying to take it to the beach, and a lot of it's in my district, but it's not all in my district. Alligator Point's in your district. McKissick Beach is in your district. None of those other areas. But if we're going to try to enforce something in spots, I think we're asking incredible, incredible task from our sheriff's office. And I think we'd be better off to not adopt anything with this ordinance. And then if we have to address safety later, then we have to do it. That's what we're here for. That's what I think. But I didn't make a motion.
I think you got a good idea, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
I really do. I think you do. Because I'm telling you, one thing is what you're saying, but then I know there is quite a few businesses here in Franklin County that is getting into the e-bike business. And we don't want to hurt them by putting so many restrictions on. They can't sell an e-bike. Now, am I going to ride one? Y'all won't see, Cheryl. I'll ride my brain before I ride a bike, an e-bike. But anyway... But I'm not, you know, I'm comfortable with going three miles an hour on a pedal bicycle with three wheels on it. So let's go.
What you're saying is we could... We can vote on this ordinance as it is and then walk it back if we have an issue?
Well, we can always bring it up again if we have an issue. If we're going to re-advertise it anyway.
Just don't take no action at all.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm in.
Commissioners, one thing I'd like, I'm just asking a question because of standing there. I would also like the opportunity from my end. So we're trying to talk about e-bikes in which the state recognizes on the multi-use path that was funded by the state?
Yeah.
I kind of like to look into that a little bit more, commissioners, you know? So I'm... Mr. Chairman, I'm with you with just kind of just leaving this rest for a while. Let's see what happens, you know?
Just have me listen to the commentary of the board. I know you haven't made a decision yet, but we are in a public setting. So maybe if there is there anyone, maybe call for any public comment of someone that's in favor of the ordinance? I mean, those that are against it, maybe not. But if there's anyone that's in favor, the board to hear their viewpoints, give them an opportunity.
That's fine. Is there anyone here that as opposed to... You've heard the discussion this morning. As opposed to the discussion we're having, that would like to see this ordinance actually enacted or enforced? If so, you'd have time to speak publicly. Yes, sir. Please come forward and state your name for the record. Either one of you.
I'm... I just think you should leave things like they are. One of the biggest problems with e-bikes, and I've been in the cycling industry for about forty years, is now you can't differentiate which bikes are e-bikes or not.
Right.
You know, it's almost impossible. And there's been this... Other counties have had this, and I work in Pinellas. I live in Sop Chapi. I play here. But I've worked on this in Pinellas for the last five years and on the Pinellas Trail. And they perceived this problem as well. And then they started doing monitoring and they found out it wasn't a real problem. And then they came up with the enforcement and they deemed that it was impossible to enforce. So that what they did, they made it twenty mile an hour speed limit for everybody. And it tends to be that cyclists tend to get along and that ninety percent of the people using e-bikes now are fifty or older. And it's because that's the only way they could do these things. So the way I look at St. George Island, because it's a place I stay all the time, is I get less cars there because there's more people on e-bikes. And that's a big deal. So I've been on e-bikes for three years. This is a little battery and it's electric assist and I've done twenty thousand miles. And this eight-pound battery replaced eight thousand pounds of fuel. That's a big deal. And that's what e-bikes are about. It's about health, activity, and enjoyment. And I've been great seeing the shops show up in Franklin. I... That's just great. Good work.
Thank you. Just for the record, what was your name, sir?
Robert Seidler.
Thank you, sir.
All right, you're welcome.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, it seems to me we have a solution looking for a problem. And it seems that might be the way this is headed now. I've been riding a bicycle on St. Teresa Beach for seventy-five years. Three-quarters of a century. I have one in the back of my car at the front door. It's got fat tires and I ride on state lands, which is defined as below the main high water, which as I understand it doesn't own, it's not owned by Franklin County, but the states give you regulatory authority below the main high water. So, that's what this ordinance is talking about. This ordinance is not talking about in the dunes. It's talking about what they refer to as the wet beach. And I ride at St. Teresa Beach at low tide. If somebody's laying on the beach, I slow down and try to pass them. And, and, and that's the only way. My legs cannot paddle a bicycle on the beach anymore. But with assist of electricity, that seven hundred fifty watt battery, I'm able to do it. So, that's what this is about as far as I'm concerned.
Yes, sir.
Access.
Thank you, sir. We did have one that was online. I don't know if they still wanna speak.
Actually, I have three.
Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, my name is Michael Pace and I represent a local bicycle network called The Bicycle House, which includes the shop in Carabel and a shop in Tallahassee and a potential shop in Sop Chapi. And so, we're trying to develop a network to help service people for their bicycles. And, and my comment would be that bicycling is a very inviting sport. And most people that grow up ride a bicycle that physically can in some of their first experiences of independence and community because we ride bicycles. Sorry, I'm a little slow. We ride bicycles with our friends and our family. And so, bicycles are a very inviting concept. They are both universal and ubiquitous. Bicycles are part of the human experience. And now that the state is developing the Sun Trail, which my wife and I and The Bicycle House have been exhibiting the Sun Trail multi-trail at festivals, people are very excited about the bicycle trail because it will raise all boats. And the bicycle trail is being adopted in counties statewide. And so, by eliminating the, the e-bikes from access to the multi-use trail, would, I do not feel would be a beneficial sign to, to tourism in this county. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Hey, my name is Cheryl Claus and this is not the comment I intended to make, but keeping up with the dynamic conversation of our board and I do appreciate the proactive approach because I live on St. George Island. And I think that a lot of the problems we're having with golf court, golf carts and regulation and all of that is something that we need to be much more proactive about 'cause we are in a reactive area. But keeping up with your dynamic conversation, um, it occurs to me that you might have a problem with enforcement because if the state doesn't differentiate between bikes and e-bikes, even prohibiting them on the beach, how does a tourist or a person visiting know that it's illegal? Are you gonna mark every single access to that beach saying, "In this county, you can't ride your e-bike on the beach. In this county, you can ride your bike, but not e-bike." So, it's not just a problem from enforcement. And I'm not an enforcement officer and I don't pretend to speak for them. But it's not just a comment of you're not gonna be able to tell which bikes are e-bikes and which bikes are regular, but you're gonna put yourself in a position of being more prohibitive with access to beaches that you can't have a sign in every single possible place. You can't really do, so you're gonna give them a hundred and five dollar fine for not knowing our law. So, I think, you know, you need to be real careful when you're thinking about how you wanna enact this and how you're going to advertise it and how you're going to make it known to our visitors and our local residents. So, be careful.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
Come on now.
Now's the time.
Just a quick thing, also going on what's been said. I understand protecting the dunes. My name's Eve Devane and I have a house on, uh, St. George Island. I've been coming here for thirty-five years and I've never seen a bike on the beach. Um, but I think the dunes are protected already. So, if you can't be on the dunes, if I can't walk up and play on the dunes 'cause it's not legal, then I can't ride my bike there either. So, I think it's, it's a law on top of a law or, or an ordinance on top of an ordinance that we don't need. They're already protected. You don't, an officer doesn't need to know if that's a real bike or a regular bike. If it's on the dune, it's not supposed to be there. So, that's my only point. Um, I will say I have an e-bike. They are expensive. I would never ride it on the beach for that reason alone, but that's just me.
Thank you. Online, sir? Anyone else in the room? I'm sorry. Online, sir?
Okay. Start to the top, uh, Janet Jocelyn, first name?
Yep.
And unmuted Janet Jocelyn?
Yes. I would like to say that I am, I support the ordinance to prohibit the e-bikes on the bike trail out here on St. George Island. Uh, I see it as a growing problem with danger and nuisance to all users of all ages on the bike trail. It's not a very wide bike trail. There are people out there pushing their babies in strollers. There's young children just learning how to bicycle. There are, um, people walking and people of all ages biking regular bikes, such as myself, a age of seventy-one. And they, e-bikes just go too fast on the bike trail. They don't, um, a lot of the, the people, the majority of the people that are using them do not need to use them. They're not handicapped or disabled. And I just see it as a potentially growing problem that could lead to some nuisance and danger for people here. Thank you.
Mr. Jocelyn?
Uh, next is John D.T.
You know, I, I think the board is right not to regulate this. I think, I was in bike store yesterday and I, I see the future where you're not gonna be able to buy a bike that isn't an e-bike. That's kind of the way things are moving, you know, to be, pedal assist, whether you're somebody who has limited mobility or somebody who wants to push themselves and go on a longer ride than they normally would that has the ability to get home because they have a little bit of an assist, I think is a wrong thing. Um, when I first saw this ordinance, the only thing that I agreed with that might be a good common sense is to ban them from the sidewalks. I mean, I don't think you're supposed to ride a bike on a sidewalk anyway, you know, but, uh, all these other areas, multi-use paths, I can ride thirty miles an hour on my triathlon bike on bike path without any pedal assist. And, you know, it's, it's about being a responsible rider, whether it's a human-powered bike or a sipped bike. So, I think, uh, it's about responsible riding and how you ride it. And again, the sidewalk is the only place that would make sense to me to maybe ban an e-bike. Thanks for letting me share.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yep. Uh, Ms., Mr. David Covington? If you would unmute your device and address the board?
Good morning Commissioners, David Covington. I have a house out on St. George Island. I just wanna know, have we, if we go down this road, have we defined, or I know the state has already defined, I'm just wanting to make sure uh, in regards to what an e-bike is, and we've talked about pedal assist and stuff like that. You know, there are some mopeds, now I know that they're gas and you know, we had the death of a lady, uh, many years ago, uh, on Gulf Beach Drive that was riding a moped that, that died. Uh, you know, you have some mopeds that have pedals. I just wanna make sure if we're gonna go down this road, you know, that we have some kind of thing saying that we're talking electric and make sure we've got that defined. And is there a speed limit on, um, electricity? You know, can these things, you know, do a certain speed, just like we're talking about with golf carts? I don't know if that's defined. The only other thing I have to say is I'll follow up on what Cheryl said. And this goes for any of these ordinances that you guys are, are looking to pass moving forward. We need to make sure that we've got enforcement, uh, capabilities to do this. Whether it's coming through the sheriff's office or we're talking about this new code enforcement thing that we're doing, we need to make sure that we've got somebody there that can enforce these because otherwise it's doing us no good. That's the sentiment from all of our visitors that are coming in, as well as the locals that are down there that are, that are asking for help uh, in regards to the golf cart ordinances and stuff like that. That's really all I've got. I appreciate you guys, uh, for everything that you do and I appreciate your time this morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. John Barry?
Good, good afternoon again. Um, I just wanna bring up, I believe that there is a bill on the governor's desk right now on these e-bikes. And I think there's specific language, you know, like, uh, Mr. Chairman, that Attorney General, I mean Attorney Schuler, look at it. It, whatever we do, it cannot be more restrictive. And I think there's specific language to that effect in that bill, that we cannot be more restrictive than what the state, state law is. That's all I have. Thank you.
So, I will say in response to some of the comments we made, the, Ms. Erin, the, the specifically the bike paths we have on the island, isn't it a sun trail? Wasn't it done with those grant dollars, sun trail? Uh, that's why I'm, I'm asking. Okay.
Yeah, I believe it was actually a connected trail. Let me look at my grant application.
Just connected, okay.
Let's see here.
Sorry, I wasn't trying to be rude, sir. In any event, so when we first started looking at this, again, I brought this forward. Some, some residents thought that it was a sun trail.
It's a greenway trail.
Okay.
Yeah, but it does have connectivity.
Right. But a sun trail is shared, used, non-motorized. Again, not knowing that the state, and I didn't know at that time, that the state defined it, an e-bike, as a bicycle. They don't look at it as being motorized, even though it is. That's why we brought the issue forward strictly for safety reasons. But I think we know from the discussion, from the fact-finding, from everything we do today, if nothing else, the public should know after today, this board functions in the sunshine. All discussion we've had has been here live, in person. Uh, because if, if the state refers to it as a bike, we, we're gonna have a hard time referring to it any other way. And I, you know, I know you made a motion earlier. Okay. So, you were drawing your motion to table? Okay. So, is there any more public discussion or, or public comment before we proceed? All right. Yes, sir.
Once again, my name is Michael Pace and my wife and I are, we are professional cartographers and we do the mapping for the Sun Trail. And so, we brought the maps to show, but in lieu of the time-saving, is the Sun Trail is actually in pre-construction here in Franklin. It goes through Panacea and it is now in pre-construction phase called the Carabel Connector.
Mm-hmm. Yep. And it's supposed to venture all the way through.
Yeah, and so, it's pre-construction. So, so the current bicycle paths, the multi-use path are not considered a sun trail. And sun trail is just a connection of existing bikes. That's why it's called network.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, in light of the discussion we had today, would the board entertain a motion of denying or not, not, uh, taking up this ordinance? Instead of table it? Do we need to actually have a vote to not enact the ordinance? Or we just need to take no act? What do we need to do? If that's what the board wants to do?
Based on the commentary that I'm hearing is not to table. It is to drive a state through it. So, my, my suggested motion to the board would be a motion, uh, to not adopt the ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Then, simple as that.
So, we did have that motion withdrawn early.
Okay, well, I make a motion not to adopt the ordinance on e-bike.
Okay, a motion not to approve by Commissioner Sanders?
One second.
We have a second by Commissioner Anderson. Any more discussion before we vote?
Reason stated.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous.
Commissioners, that concludes the two public hearings I was responsible for this morning.
All right. Let's take a five-minute break and we'll come back and come back to Mr. Walker. Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now back in session. We're going back to item five on our agenda, Mr. David Walker, WHEM CEO, giving a quarterly update and a request.
Good morning, well, good afternoon again, thank you commissioners. Just a quick update before I get into the request. Building security, you know, we partnered with the City of Appalachia Cola Franklin County Insurance Office to establish a sub-office, you know, outside of the hospital. I'm not just going to tell you what, since we're in a public meeting, you know, the locations and all of that, but it's right outside the hospital there. And the sheriff office, as well as City of Appalachia Cola, they come do rounds at the hospital. We're also installing some panic buttons at the hospital, as well as both of our clinics. And these particular panic buttons, if they are pushed, they will be monitored like our fire prevention system, and then they will alert law enforcement personnel when that panic button happens. So, that'll be installed at both clinics, Appalachia Cola Carabel, as well as the hospital. Now, my action item here, Southland Emergency Medical Services Amendment. Southland provides 24-hour curbages for our emergency department and hospitalist services in our inpatient unit. They would like to increase their annual contract rate. Southland has not requested an increase to their rate since the original 2011 contract with WHEM's. The current annual rate is $707,001.60 per year, which is about $81 per hour for 24 hours' coverage around the clock. They are requesting their annual rate be increased to $815,001.60 in year one, which is about $93 per hour for 24 hours' care, $908,280, which is about $104 per hour in year two. Mr. Kozar also reviewed Southland requests, and he feels that is very reasonable. Just a point of clarification, right now, the going rate for a nurse practitioner to provide hospitalist service inside a hospital is between $90 per hour to $100 per hour. And then, if you want physician coverage, according to Mr. Kozar, that rate is about $200 per hour. So, I need board action to approve Southland increase.
Mr. Chairman? Yes.
Just, for the record, Southland, that's the ER doctor.
Yes, yes, yeah, the ER doctor. They do ER as well as the inpatient, which they call hospitalist care.
And they haven't, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Yes.
They have not had any increases since 26 September 2011.
Correct, correct, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I got a quick question.
Yes.
The, I understand this group's been there for a good little while. Could you, who's, do you, is there a doctor that has this group?
Yeah, Dr. Paul Hart.
Dr. Hart?
Yeah, Dr. Hart is the owner. And years ago, Southland came in and kind of like helped the county out when the last group that was here, you know, turned the keys over to the county. And so, Dr. Paul Hart, WHEM's was probably one of the first groups that he came into. And so, that's probably, they hadn't asked for an increase. They have about maybe six, eight other facilities, Mr. Kozar may know more, I mean, other facilities that he's at now.
Between Florida and Alabama, they're at six facilities right now, so.
Yeah, but Dr. Paul Hart is the owner of that group.
Any money of that?
Basically, we're just amending the pay, so the contract would be the same, just a...
Yeah, yeah, the contract would be the same. Attorney Schuler looked at the amendment, so the contract terms don't change, meaning that we rely on a one-year annual renewal with them, technically, and then we have an out clause as well.
Mr. Chairman, this, so this is only, so basically, it's going to go up incrementally in the next two years?
Yeah.
And the contract's good for how long?
It's an annual contract.
Oh, annual contract.
Yeah, so we hadn't changed the contract, so technically, you know, they want an increase right now. And then, next year, they'll do another increase. And that still will bring them lower than what we can find now in the market, you know, for a ED team to come provide services in the hospital.
So moved, we can't run it without nothing.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley.
I'll say it, but Mr. Chairman, I'd like for Attorney Schuler to confirm that he looked over all this, and it's copacetic, not to say that, you know, you said he looked over it, and I just want to ensure he's okay with it.
So, it's...
You're my attorney.
So, we have the second, but you're saying you want the second to be continued on the attorney's review, correct? Are you good with your motion being the same way, sir?
Yeah, yeah.
So, we have a motion to approve and a second contingent on the attorney's review.
Yeah.
Of the contract. All right, any other discussion before we vote? And the motion was by Commissioner Lockley and second by Commissioner Ward.
I've got one more question, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, Mr. Walker, these physicians, they not only serve the ER patients, they also serve the inpatients in the hospital that are staying, correct?
Correct, correct, yeah. And that's one of the reasons why the rate is so good for us, because usually you have two different providers doing that service, and your costs will be up.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
You know, back then, when we, when Dr. Hart come in, we was in bad shape. Commissioner Sanders, though.
We was in bad shape.
Yeah, they told us that the owner of the hospital had come in, I think a previous meeting, and said, "Well, I'm going to go down in a month." Maybe, and then, that was like the pride of that. That Monday, he come in here and hands the keys, and says, "Y'all go for it, you know."
You sure?
And he waited, he waited till late in the evening. He do it early, the boat, he got late in. We had scramble.
Anything else for Mr. Walker?
I have one, one other item, you know, my nursing director, Courtney Afra, had made a request for a nursing call system, you know, to upgrade our nursing call system at the hospital. And so, we're requesting that we purchase the new call system for the ED, as well as the inpatient unit. The cost is $49,968. We're requesting board approval to purchase this out of the capital outlay item of the Healthcare Trust Fund.
Pleasure, Ward.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley.
My second.
Second by Commissioner Amison, any discussion?
I think I had this discussion, this question before, you said nurse call light system?
Well, it's a nursing call system, yeah, call light, you know.
So, for like, for the patients to call to the nurses station?
Yeah, 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 patient safety, pretty much.
Okay, is it like a code button, too?
Yeah, but they can push a button, yeah. If something happened in the room, they'll push a button, and that, the nurse will be alerted as well. But, you know, so, and then you can add other pieces to it as well, you know, we can grow with this system.
So, in other words, it won't be obsolete?
Oh, no, no, you can move it.
For three years.
Yeah, yeah, you can move the system, then you can add, you know, to the system Courtney was telling me about.
Didn't he use to have one of them out there?
Yeah, it used to, but it's old, you know, just trying to update the equipment. You know, and most hospitals got them, basically, we just want to update it.
Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you all for your time, glad to see you.
Thank you. Mr. Moore? I know that we're pushing time to try to at least do something for lunch.
Uh-huh.
And maybe come back, but this gentleman's been waiting for a long time. We need to do at least his part of the planning and zoning adjustment board report before we leave.
I mean, we could go through the planning and zoning, and go, I don't think you'll take...
Then, after that, if y'all are okay with commissioners, we'll take an hour lunch break, meet back at 1:30, finish the board meeting, and then roll right into our work.
All right, give us a second, because Courtney was in there, I just told her, I'm sure she could hear before 1:30.
All right, please, get her. I don't want to make this gentleman have to come back after lunch when he's waited this whole time to talk. No, we did not.
He been a student patient.
Nah, he's not the patient.
She heard her, she was laughing coming out of the little hallway.
All right, so at this time, we'll go to our planning and zoning adjustment board report. Whenever you get ready, Ms. Courtney.
Okay.
No pressure, we're just waiting.
I like that, no pressure.
All right, so I have, the first one I have is a variance request. At two, I'm sorry, 328 Patent Street, it's a consideration of request for variance to encroach 47 feet into the 50-foot wetland setback to install a vinyl seawall and limestone riprap. It was submitted by Orange Construction for Gator Bay SGI LLC. They had to have two different applications in, one because of the encroachment into the 50-foot wetland setbacks that they had to get a variance to install the riprap. So, that's what the variance is for. Because it's going to be right on their property, at the edge of their property line, which is approaching that 50-foot wetland setback. And the board did motion for approval for this variance.
Pleasure, Ward.
Where is it?
St. George Island.
It's inlet, sir, they're on basin.
You know, for patent, it's on the Manmade Canal, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
On the patent?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lockley.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
And I have three, four? One, two, three, four? Nope, three. I have three critical shoreline applications. I don't know if you guys wanted to approve all those in one.
Commissioners, do you have any question about any one of these over another one? Like to pull it, to discuss it separately, or y'all good with making a motion for all of them?
I'm, Mr. Chairman, I'm good making a motion of all of them personally, but just to make a note for the record, Courtney, it looks like the Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustment Board also approved these unanimously, is that correct?
Yes, contingent upon state and federal permits or exemptions.
All right, okay, so we're looking, if you would, read off at least where they are and kind of what it is, and we'll go from there.
Okay, so the first one is going to be the riprap, because they had to also get approval for critical shoreline application for the riprap, for 328 Patent Street. That's the one you just read the variance for. The other one is at 380 Alligator Drive. The next one is at 469 East Gulf Beach Drive. You said there was a fourth one?
On the original one, you had a 2812 on US Highway 98. I don't know, you guys didn't hear it, but it was, I thought it was on the agenda, so the agenda might have changed, but I didn't have to put this on there.
Yeah, I think he ended up putting it on.
So, was it just the three then?
Yes.
Okay.
And all of them are...
Yeah, the 2812, apparently, he pulled it, I did this before they had the meeting, so that's probably why, Commissioner.
Okay, so it was just A, B, and C?
Yes.
Pleasure, the board? Motion to approve by Commissioner Amison, second by Commissioner Lockley, any discussion?
Yes, just, she had said that the critical shorelines are all subject to state and federal permits under the requirement.
Correct.
Okay.
You'll make one and do them all, right?
Yes, sir, one motion. All right, seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Next, I have the, I'm sorry, commercial site plan review.
If I would, may I, I'd like to step in on that one, Commissioner. So, this is all about a fence, and let me backtrack a little bit. So, years ago, the board, it's actually in our zoning code that we're supposed to get permits for fence. I think at one time, my predecessor was inundated with too many permits for fences on residential, so he kind of paused that for a while, and that kind of became the policy. The problem is, it spilled over into commercial, which I feel anything that happens on a commercial property should be indicated in some way or the other, especially since it's in our zoning code, to pull permits for fences. So, on this particular one, the gentleman, this is not his fault, he came and he asked two or three times, he did what the policy was, you know, but after I kind of researched, I said, "That doesn't sit well." I kind of researched it, I said, "Okay, we're supposed to have permits for fences." So, I asked Mrs. Banksen, and our billing official, I said, "Henceforth, from now on, if it's on a commercial property, let's go back to what the code says, go ahead and pull a permit. I don't mind if staff approves it, that's fine, but indicate on your planning and zoning administrative report that staff approve all these fences." So, to basically get to this, this is not an action item, it should be an informational item, that staff to approve this, this permit for this fence, it's on commercial. Now, I would like to stick with, perhaps, on residential, that we ask them to pull a permit for no charge, only because there's an eight-foot, is it eight feet?
Height, yeah.
So, we need to have some way for Steve to go out and make sure that the fence, Steve or somebody else, inspector, code enforcement, whomever, go out and make sure that some resident isn't putting a 10, 12-foot, you know what I mean? So, I would like to do that, if the board has no problem with that, but again, it will be a... But again, it will be a staff-approved permit, and it'll just be indicated on the planning and zoning's report, which you will see as part of the zoning administrative report. No charge.
Because the issue we're having a lot of is land art as well.
Yes, that's why I would like, because, you know, we've had quite a few fights in land art. So if we would go back to the original policy, kind of, and do it that way, and then we'll update the website, because then it would need to be updated as to what the new policy is for fences and gates.
Mr. Chairman, I...
That's a good thing.
Yeah, I think it is.
I saw this, and I called you, because I'm like, Courtney, you were out. So I called him. I'm like, "What? Why are we having to approve a fence? This makes no sense to me." And I had myself have a fence in my house, and I asked staff, and this was before I was a commissioner, "Do we have to have a permit for a fence?" And they said, "No, as long as it's within eight feet." So I saw this, and I'm thinking, "This is insane." So I went to the website, and on the website, it states, the planning, zoning, building website, it states that you do not have to have a permit for the fence. And I've said it many times at previous meetings, consistency. I don't like inconsistency. If we're gonna have to have a site prep permit for this person to have to pull it, then this person also needs to pull a site prep permit, or none at all. Just like a fence. If they are required to pull, this person's required to pull a permit for a five-foot fence, then everybody else should have to do the same. I just, that's how I am. And I guess we don't have to make a vote on this then?
No, it's information.
It's informational, yep.
Commissioner, I just did not want to change policy without discussing with the board in a public meeting. Because I kind of wanted to get your feedback on it before I made any changes to the policy with something like fences, both in commercial and on residential properties.
So basically, what you're asking is, commercial, anybody that pulls, needs to pull a permit for a fence, commercial properties have to pay for it, residentials do not.
Yeah, again, if the board doesn't mind, I'd like to put a slight charge on a commercial one just because of the process it has to go through with residential, not just that they do come and pull a permit, and we have it on record that they did, and they would adhere to the maximum height of that fence.
But then you got to have the enforcer go out and measure the fence and make sure it's important.
Right back to that again.
Again, policy.
Yep.
I'm all good for that.
Okay.
Personally.
Okay. All right, I'll turn it back over to the court. Thank you, Commissioner.
Go ahead.
Hey, one more thing, Mr. Chairman, sorry. Make sure that the website reflects that.
Yes.
She will.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't want to change that until I talk to the board.
Yeah.
Confusion.
And while we're at it, before we go to the next item of the website, I also need to reflect that the height restriction in the county is 47 feet, not 35.
Oh, the website does say 47 feet. I know on some of the...
The documents where if you pull the document up, it still says 35.
I was trying to kill it.
And that's not it. Anyway, go ahead.
So the last thing I have is a plot application for enclave at St. James Bay. They are requesting to change the density. Here, when they originally got approved, they had condos, condominiums, and now they're changing it. They're like lot 11 and 12 is basically going to be one thing on there. So they're changing the density so that it's not as many...
So they're asking for reduction in density?
Yeah, decrease in density is on?
Correct.
Okay.
And this is part of that PUD, you know, PUD.
The St. James PUD.
Yes. And I know I had to refresh the memory back there, a little bit mark memory. But this was all approved back during the time of the PUD. So I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Anything with less density?
Yeah.
Before, okay, so we have a motion to approve. We have a second by Commissioner Sanders, Commissioner Ward. But we also do have a speaker card. Sir, do you wish to speak?
Robbie Miller, resident of Franklin County. And I'm just here if you have any questions. It cut the density in half. And they're going from condos to townhomes, so there's all kinds of burdens with condos today. Insurance, lender, so, yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. All right, any more discussion from the board before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. All right, Commissioners, I guess we'll meet back at 1:30, finish this up, and then go right to our workshop?
Yes, sir.
Agreeable with everybody?
Yep, works for me.